I'd like to call the meeting to order. We have a kind of a full agenda tonight, so I want to get started. We have one school board member that's caught in traffic, but will be here shortly. So join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. Thank you. And also as another reminder to the public that we have a time for the public to speak about non-agenda items. It's right after recognitions. But if you're here to speak about an agenda item, we will take those comments as the agenda item comes up for discussion. All right, so I will turn it over at this time to Sandy for recognitions. And first up is the Advanced Placement Honor Roll.
Thank you, thank you so much. And I'm going to ask the AP teachers who are present here this evening to come up and join you. Right here, come on. Peg, oh, there she is. Come up too. Okay. In your right face. Tonight, we are extremely proud to announce that Hudson has again been named an Advanced Placement Honor Roll District. This is the fifth time in six years we have been selected for this honor. The sixth annual honor roll consists of 425 school districts across the US and Canada that simultaneously achieved increases in access to advanced placement courses for a broader number of students and also maintained or improved the rate at which their AP students earn scores of three or higher on an AP exam. And I'm just going to remind you, because I know I shared this a couple of months ago, you might recall from 2014-15, we went from 448 students participating in AP to 632. And we went from 628 scores of three or above to 822 in 2015. So just an amazing jump from 14-15. Tonight, we want to especially congratulate our high school AP teachers, many who are here this evening, Peg, our high school principal, and all of our Hudson High School students and teachers. In addition, this award represents the dedication and focus on learning of all staff in our K-12 system. Together, we continue to help more students learn at higher levels and find success in college-level courses. Even with their success, our AP teachers continue to focus on reviewing their data and implementing a variety of strategies to expand yet access and improve student performance. Everyone in the district has contributed to this award. And you can see behind us, they sent us several posters, so we'll be having those both at the district level, and they'll be sending some to the high school as well. But just an amazing honor. We have yet to really know how many districts just within the state of Wisconsin have received it five times, but that will probably be coming out shortly as well. But again, congratulations to all of you.
Any comments by board members? Well, I just want to thank the teachers again. What's that? Oh, Bruce, you got one?
Yeah, I was just going to say, congratulations. It's quite an honor. And we hear about how great our academics are in the Hudson area, but you don't really get to see it demonstrated every day. So thanks for all the commitment and energy and time that you guys put into it, and very grateful for what you guys do in the community.
Right. I think we were warned a couple of years ago that this is not an award that we should be able to get every year because it involves growth and so forth, and things generally cap out at some point. But yet, with the efforts of our teachers, we continue to grow in this area. And, you know, it's also good reflection back on the families as well as the efforts that they put in with their students. So thank you for that partnership. Next up, the EP Rock Elementary, closing the gap. Who's handling that recognition?
I have that, Mr. President.
All right, Tony.
So just before winter break, I received a call from the state Special Education Director with DPI. And when I heard her voice and she introduced herself, I thought, oh, boy, what did I do wrong? And I was pleasantly surprised when she told me that EP Rock had been identified as one of only 18 schools in the state that have had exceptional achievement in the area of reading for students with disabilities. And because of their outstanding work, they were being invited to participate in a promising practices work group that was going to be going on this year. So tonight with us, we have three individuals, Principal Amy Hamborg, Special Education Teacher Erin Shilkin, and Speech Clinician Sheri Hole, who are here to tell you a little bit about what they'll be doing on the promising practices work group, as well as what's contributed to their success at Rock.
Thank you very much. It's also very exciting. And I had the same thought when Tony called me and said, "I got a call from the state." So it's wonderful. And obviously, even listening to the first presentation, we know at the elementary what we do makes a difference for our students at the high school. So this is two of our extraordinary staff, and they're going to tell you a little bit more about it. But it is something we're celebrating building-wide, from custodians to cooks, to nurses, to teachers, and to educational assistants. But everyone is delighted, and our students are wonderful. So they're going to share a little bit about that.
So Sheri and I will be going to five different meetings with DPI. The first one is next week, where we'll learn a lot more about where the data came from, that they're looking at, how long they've been looking at that data, and to meet the representatives from the 18 other schools. I think that will be really exciting for us to see what other schools are doing as well. The one thing that's really important for us, that Sheri and I have been talking a lot about, is that this is really a school-wide thing, and that as a staff, we're able to look at students and not lock them into one or two interventions, that we're really thinking outside the box about what kids need, and being able to try different things until we find what's going to fit for that student.
And we think that this award really is something that belongs to our entire staff, our parents, our students. I've been at EP Rock a really long time. We have really passionate educators there, and we have support from our principal, that if we have a dream and something that we think would really make a difference, she always makes sure that we find a way to make that happen.
We really don't know a whole lot. Our first meeting is next Tuesday, so we're kind of going in not knowing exactly what's going to go on with this, but we are really excited about meeting our counterparts from the other 18 districts.
Any questions for board members? Again, I think this is a great recognition, being one of only 18 out of, what, 400-plus districts in the state. And, you know, this also shows that we have emphasis on all students, not just the ones who are the AP students or necessarily the honor students. So closing the gap with the students with disabilities, a very important effort. Thank you for your efforts in that regard.
And, Mr. President, I'd just like to point out that it's one of 18 schools from the entire state, not just districts. So we're talking about thousands and thousands of schools in the state of Wisconsin.
All right. Excellent. That's great. Rob?
You mentioned a little bit about meeting some of these other schools that are having some success. Do you get to spend any real time with them to talk about best practices and things like that?
We have four meetings scheduled. One of them, each of them is a single day, one of them is a two-day kind of meeting. We've got the first agenda, and it looks like they're going to be presenting a lot of information. It's something that the state's been working on, kind of in conjunction with our state superintendent's sort of agenda. There's going to be homework involved, so we're not sure exactly how much time we're going to get to talk, but we're hoping.
Mr. President?
Yes, Bruce?
I would love to hear more about this later, after you've gone through the meetings and get some more data. It would be really interesting to see, you know, what it is, and obviously, the other elementaries in our district can learn from that, and maybe even other districts in the area. Because I would suspect that hopefully you guys will share this with others. I know that there's oftentimes a lot of correspondence that happens even with neighboring schools. So spectacular work. I think literacy and reading is one of the most important aspects for kids growing up, so nice work.
I was just going to add, the culminating activity is putting together an actual manual that will go out statewide, so.
Awesome.
So we'll give that.
And I had one other thought. You know, we've had a lot of people that have sort of been changing jobs at EP Rock, and we really feel strongly that this honor also belongs to the people that have recently retired, that put years and years into making this happen.
Nice shout-out.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing the credit there. That's good. Do we have any citizen requests to speak about non-action items? All right, the answer is no, so we skip ahead to Section 5, which is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. On my report, I have four different topics I want to hit on. They're brief, but I feel they're important. First of all, I'd like to remind everyone that on April 5th, we will be having a school board election. We have three candidates that have taken out paperwork to run for office, and those candidates' names in alphabetical order are Bruce Hansen, Jamie Johnson, and Mary Yakub. Because there is only three candidates, we will not be running a primary, so it'll just be the general election on April 5th. In the next month or so, and Tim, maybe he has the date, is when we'll actually pick the ballot order, and that is done through a random drawing.
What's that?
We don't have the date yet, but we'll make sure the candidates know, and if they'd like to attend, they can attend the random order ballot selection. Open enrollment dates, just wanted to make sure you're aware, it's in your packet. Open enrollment is from February 1st to April 29th. We have an agenda item tonight towards the end of the meeting, where we are going to determine the number of open spots in our district that would allow people to open and roll in. And so you can see there's information there, how they apply, questions, kind of that frequently asked question portion. But February 1st to April 29th is the official open enrollment period, as you can see on those sheets. And if you have questions, you can always let me know about that as well. The district-wide kindergarten roundup, that will be happening on Tuesday, February 2nd. That will be from 4:00 to 6:00 PM at Hudson Prairie Elementary School. And so what we would encourage people to do is please call the elementary school to be on the mailing list, to come with a birth certificate, proof of residency, along with registration forms. And this is our first crack at trying to understand what our kindergarten numbers are for next year. We, there's really not a whole lot of correlation between kindergarten registration, kindergartners that show up. The more people we can get to show up now, the more information we can get to them ahead of actual registration days and school start days. And so we would encourage anybody that has a kindergartner that'll be attending the district next year to attend that evening and bring those items with them. And then the last thing on the superintendent's report, and trying to be brief because I know we have quite an agenda ahead of us, is the Women in STEM Plus Open House, and that'll be at the middle school on February 11th. Great opportunity for the districts inviting female students, grades K through 8, and their families, to a STEM Plus evening. What this is, is an opportunity for students to explore math, science, technology, engineering, and applied arts, meet and talk with different professionals in the area, females that have excelled in those areas, because we're really trying to push to increase our numbers of female students in the STEM area. And so that is on February 11th, from 5:00 to 8:00 at the middle school. Just a great opportunity for kids, and really wanting to show some of our youngest female students that there are lots of opportunities in science, math, technology, and engineering, and what that could look like beyond, not just in the K-12 setting, but beyond schools. So really looking forward to that evening, should be a great evening for everyone. So with those four brief announcements, I will turn it back over to you.
Well, ask any board members to have any questions of Dr. Olet.
Yes, Dr. Olet. I just wanted to go back to the school board candidates. I assume everyone knows that two of them are already on the board, Bruce Hansen and Jamie Johnson, but I noticed tonight Mary Yakub is also here. Maybe just raise your hands, we know who the third candidate is, and I think it's nice that we're all here tonight.
Thank you for that. I had a question, Nick, on the, it says there to bring the birth certificate, proof of residency, and it says along with registration forms. If they don't have the registration forms, our forms provide, it's just that it'll take longer because they'll have to fill them all in there?
So for example, yes. So there'll be forms there that they can fill out, but I have a kindergartner that's going to be starting next year, and we had called the school to get his name on the list, and they mailed us out the forms ahead of time so that we could get those filled out at home and make that process a little bit quicker that evening. But if they don't have forms, or they forgot the forms at home, we'll have plenty of forms for them to fill out. That's one thing we do well, is we make people fill out forms.
Okay. Good.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Just a quick question on the STEM. I've had a couple of people ask me, their children have sporting activities after school, and I know it says it's an open house, but is the format such that people can pop in and out, or are the activities set that you really need to kind of come and be there at a certain time and attend all the way through?
It's my understanding that there'll be different activities through the entire evening, that they don't necessarily have to be there for the entire night. I think it'd be most beneficial for them to be through the whole night, but there's different stations that they'll end up rotating through.
Thank you.
And the emphasis is on all grades K through 8?
Yes.
All right. Any other questions of the superintendent? If not, we'll continue with reports. And for Board President's report, I have a very short report. Since our last regular meeting, we had the meeting on December 15th, which was a special meeting about secondary space. And we had Bray Architects here, as well as an HVAC engineer, and it was kind of a focused meeting, but then with the encouraging all board members to ask questions, and I think that there's been several questions asked, and we'll get a report tonight from Bray that updates a lot of the plans. And when we get to that action item, just for clarification too, that we will, you know, we will be asking for the citizens' request to speak, but after the Bray report. Rather than having Bray do the report, come up, give a report, and then go down and sit down until the action item is there, we just thought it made most sense to have them give their report when the action item is started, so. But as far as my report, then, for the thing that we have going forward is next week is the State Education Convention. I've attended the last two years. I won't be able to attend this year, but Bruce and Rob are going. Rob's our elected delegate. We pointed him at the last meeting. So there was an email sent around to all board members about the 16 resolutions that have been put forward by various school boards across the state, and measures in the dozens. I think they get dozens of these resolutions. Many of them overlap, are repetitive and whatnot, so they have a committee that does nothing but vets all these resolutions and so forth, and then decides whether they get, should be supported or not. Rob, why don't you just briefly address, well, first of all, did you get any feedback from board members, or do other board members that want to give feedback on these different issues?
Mr. President, I have not received any additional feedback, other than what we've received in committee.
All right. But you met with administration, and these are the folks that deal with these education issues every day. And of the 16 resolutions, it looks like there's a couple that were neutral on because they don't apply to our district. One were cautiously supportive, but one of them, that one particular has a lot of fine print that needs to be added to it, so that the devil will be in the details there. And then Resolutions 15, 16, we're actually not supporting. And the reason on the one is that it would add another level of referendum to districts in taking decisions out of the hands of board members. And the other is Resolution 16-16, I guess 16 being the year that we're in now, prevailing wage can drive up the cost of construction programs. There's apparently a resolution to give school districts the option of allowing prevailing wage to be back on a case-by-case basis. The state legislature's already acted on that, and we're deciding not to support that resolution, I understand. But otherwise, the, I know that for most of these resolutions, the vote ends up being like 95 to 5 percentage-wise. There's a few controversial ones. I'll bet that the prevailing wage one might get a pretty close vote.
Yeah. Mr. President, this gives us an opportunity to make our district's voice heard, and our superintendent and staff were kind enough to pull together some of their thoughts, whether in support or not in support of the varying resolutions that we'll be discussing during the session in Milwaukee. And to your point, there's only two of the 16 that we're not in support of, as you've noted, and others that ultimately will either help protect our district or further support education.
Yep. Very good. All right, not seeing any questions on that, we'll just keep moving right along to the STRIVE program review. And I understand we have several people here to present on that.
We do, Mr. President, and I'd like to introduce this report, if I might. As many of the board members know, we have an alternative education program at our high school called STRIVE. And STRIVE went through their 20-year anniversary last school year, and this fall, they were engaged in a comprehensive program review. So we thought that this would be an ideal time to have them come and update you on the great work that they're doing, as well as next steps in the program. So tonight, we have with us two of the teachers up front, Chris Carlson and Cindy Mitchell, and the rest of the STRIVE team is also here in attendance. So Cindy, I'll turn it over to you.
Very happy to be here. And...
I see you need to push the button. There you go.
Okay. And I feel particularly excited to be surrounded by my friends right here, because each of these men have served as, Bruce and Jamie have served as mentors for our program and have been very strong advocates and supporters for our kids over the years. So I'm really, it's kind of nice to get to sit right between you guys, good to see you. My name is Cindy Mitchell. I am the coordinator of the program. I've been in the Hudson School District. This is my 30th year. This is my 11th year as the coordinator of the STRIVE program. As you've heard, the STRIVE program's been in existence for, this is our 21st year. Are you... Oh, you're not? It's not? Okay. Do you mind if I crank my head a bit? I've got no... A lot of people are not familiar with the STRIVE, the name as an acronym itself, Success Through Teamwork, Respect, Initiative, Vision, and Effort. We are an award-winning alternative education program. We're a school-within-a-school model, and we serve students in the high school, grades 9 through 12. It was created in 1994, and it actually started with a small group of 10th graders. An associate administrator at the high school saw a need for some at-risk services, and she had come from a different district, and she said, "Hey, we're missing something here." And there was a pocket of 10th graders who were causing a lot of trouble in the school at the time, and their needs weren't being matched. And so they started the program a little bit as a pilot, and hired Adam Smith, if you're familiar with him. He was the first coordinator, but really, he was a teacher with the kids for about a couple hours a day. And it's grown every year since then. This is our mission statement, we provide a safe, respectful, and challenging environment where students achieve both academic and social success, leading to graduation and lifelong learning. Our goal is always to get the kids to graduate, but we're also looking ahead, and we hope that our students will find a place in secondary education beyond high school. Now I'm going to introduce my other teammates. Megan Fritz is the newest member. She's out here. She teaches English for the team. We have Darren Soderbergh is right next to her. You can see what they teach. And Chris Carlson, he's my partner in crime. I sometimes call him dad and me mom. And Mark Randall is our educational assistant. He's in the audience as well. Now, who are our students? I'd like to spend a minute on this, because a lot of us have a focus on students, at-risk students. We have an image in our mind that who an at-risk student is. Typically, it's the juvenile delinquent that we think of. But I want you to expand your focus a little bit, and let's consider the kids that we don't always recognize. All students have these things in common that we work with. They're non-traditional learners. All of them have experienced some barrier to their learning. All of them experience some underachievement, disengagement from school, and some form of school failure, often in the way of school, or course grades, but not just course grades, but social failure as well. All of them face challenges in the school setting, outside of school at home, and many of them in the community as well. Without helping them, we, all of them are at risk of dropping out of school, not engaging in college and career readiness. That means they're going to be underemployed, unemployed, and not pursue future education, and not reaching their potential when they're community members, neighbors, partners, parents later in life. Now, this is real detailed, but we have a process of screening these kids and identifying them. It starts really the day they walk in our school building in kindergarten. We can track some of these kids back, and we've been providing services from the time that they enter the school. But we really start looking at them at middle school, and the middle school starts generating a list of student names, and they've often been served all three years at the middle school with some sort of services. Then we start doing a very thorough, multi-dimensional screening. The counselors at the middle school take the lead role on that. Records review, at-risk screening form, we do a state at-risk screening to see how many of the kids meet that. There's different screening forms and different methods out there. We use multiples, so we don't miss some. And then Risk Factor Checklist. There's a lot of risk factors that are aligned with futures of dropping out. There's not one magic bullet that we have found. It's a very complex constellation of issues these kids come with. Then we spend time with the students and their parents to assure, is this a good match? Is this something you want to do? Everybody who's in STRIVE is there by choice. The staff is there by choice, the students are there by choice, their parents are there by choice, because we're partners, and it only works that way if it's a voluntary program. Our program design and feature, I have this, we have lists and lists and lists of things we do. I tried to knock it down to some of the important things. School-within-a-school model, that means we're located right in the high school, and we access services without duplicating them. We use the same administrators, we use the same pupil services, we use many of the same classes that the other kids do. They have access to all the extracurriculars, sports, clubs, any activity. They are vital members of the high school. We have, our model is to have 15 students per grade level for 60 total students. I'll come back and talk about that number a little bit more. 15 students per grade level. There is a recommended ratio. That's a little bit above it, but we push it sometimes. Voluntary participation by all involved, I mentioned. Drop-in services throughout the day. Sometimes when our kids aren't with us for their classes during the day, they might be out in regular ed, they might be in the halls, they might be in the lunchroom having issues, and they need a home base. That's something that's unique that other students outside of STRIVE don't have. We do have advisories, but our kids will have access to us throughout the day. If a crisis, a problem, a challenge occurs, they know where they can come. They've got a home. We are allowed a lot of autonomy to kind of do things our way, but we've got lots and lots of support from our administration, and any decisions and policies that we do, we roll through and we work together on that. So I work real closely with the administration. And we have wraparound services, support services. That means if our kids need other services besides just help with their coursework, they're getting counseling, they're getting social work services, they're getting healthcare services, they're getting mental health services that they need, and they're getting referrals to outside agencies if necessary. Here's a few more. All of the students come in, and we develop an individual learning plan, and that's what do they need, how can we deliver it, and then we modify it about 800 times from the time they enter till the time they leave, because their needs change. What you register for in the fall as a 9th grade STRIVER is going to change a lot, and you will change a lot as you experience growth and change. So we modify those, and every kid's looks a little different. We have a mentorship program, as I mentioned. We get community members that volunteer. We've also had, Peg, you're back there? Peg, before she became our principal, she was a mentor for us too, when she was a principal at another building. She spent time with one of our students during her lunch period. So we get mentors from all over the community. The Rotary's been a very strong source of support for a lot of our mentors. We pride ourselves on maintaining close communication with the families involved. We try and partner with them as closely as possible, which is sometimes a challenge when these families have been disengaged and have experienced some of the same failure themselves as students. So we invite them back in and say, "This is a place that we're going to do things differently for you." We do have a code of conduct, the kids, and they do sign a contract, and that's an agreement that, and it's an agreement really, that we're going to all work on the same thing together. We're all here for the same purpose, we all want the same thing, we're going to work together. And our code of conduct... And our code of conduct extends beyond the school rules. We do follow the school rules and all the policies for the high school, but we have a few extras. Our three biggies are respect, responsibility, safety, and I see it on the wall, it's a school thing here too. And I always tell the kids, every rule you can think of in the world comes under one of those things. And it's easy to, we don't have to have eight hundred rules. Those are the three that guide everything we do. Okay, our curriculum. What are we teaching? We are teaching the same curriculum tied to state standards, but how we get there might be a little different. So our methods and our materials and our instruction might be a little different. And some days, it's very different, but we are all headed to the same outcome as regular ed is. We have kids that come in at different times, and it's a smooth transition. We do have some kids that go to other classes after ours. We need to make sure we're aligned with those, and we keep them rigorous. Sometimes programs got a bad name because they, people don't believe there's rigor. There's rigor in our program, and the kids will tell you about that. We offer all the required courses. You see a little star there because we're not complete yet, and advisories. Last year, we had to add a third year of math and science, all of us know in the state of Wisconsin. And we've got the third year of math in STRIVE right now. We don't have that third year of science. I think we're going to start noticing that. This year's current seniors don't have that requirement. I think we're going to notice that because our kids have to go to mainstream then for that third year of science. So that's a missing piece, and we also do not currently have health. And we're seeing about a fifty percent failure in each of those. That's about typical if our kids are taking these classes in mainstream, fifty percent failure rate. We do offer advisories. Each of my teachers serve as an advisor, including me, and we keep those same kits as everyone else does in the building. We do career vocational planning and credited work experience as needed. We have entrepreneurship. We always have something up our sleeves that we're always doing. We're always making something, designing something, making our rooms messy and crazy for a couple months during the year, and then we're selling our stuff, and we do it to raise money for charity and also to raise money so that we can do some of the fun stuff that I'm going to get to next. This year, I wanted to get to the holidays this year and take a breath. In February, we're going to start our charity. We will be painting and designing funky chairs, and I'm sure you all will all see them somewhere, and we will be trying to sell them to people. And we think some of our best customers are going to be teachers. Peg had talked about that. The author chair in elementary schools. So some of our best customers are employees here in the building or in the district. So we'll be looking, we'll be working on that. I will probably come to Rotary too. And those guys are good for that too, so they like to know what we're up to. Last year, we did fairy gardens last year, so we hauled our dirt and our stuff up to and showed them. Those can sell as well as some of our previous things. Just to give you a hint, we did Fab Tab bracelets with Pop Tabs about three, four years ago. Eight thousand dollars we earned. Five of it went to charities. So it was pretty amazing, and I still actually have a few dollars in my secret stash that we're still able to use to do fun stuff with the kids. So eight thousand dollars on Pop Tabs, that was our big hit. Basic skills remediation with literacy emphasis. About two-thirds of our kids are two or more years behind in their basic skills. About two-thirds of them in math, reading, written language. So we're always working on those big three, and everything's literacy-focused. That's a focus of what we're doing in the district, disciplinary literacy anyways. But we have a real reading environment and keep libraries. My room's got over a thousand books in it, and I try and be a book whisperer to kids, and Megan does the same in her English class, so we, reading, 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 reading. Credit, we offer credit recovery for kids that needed, who have experienced failure. That's very highly used by kids that have transferred in from other, we might get a tenth grader who transferred who didn't get any credits with their previous school district. And then we have to do something to make those up and then still try and get them out on time. So we do credit recovery, and we also do independent study opportunities for kids that have things that they want to study that aren't offered in our course description book, which we have a lot of stuff, but there's always something. Somebody wanted to do equine therapy a couple years ago. We did it with her. We got hooked up with the right person. We did the curriculum with her, and it was great. It was a great experience. So we do things like that if the kids need it. Study skills, behavior development, always, every day, every hour, every second, we're working on those two things. What do you need to do differently? Where are you supposed to be? Got your stuff with you? Did you really want to do that? How can you say that differently? It's just ongoing that we're working on. These are some of the things that are, make us unique, and they're also program requirements. They're not hard sells to the kids, as you can see. Adventure learning, we've been partners with Camp St. Croix for almost the whole twenty years that we do it. All four grades of our students go out to the camp in the spring. Ninth graders do a set of activities outside, tenth, eleventh. They're doing indoor rock climbing in St. Paul, and by twelfth grade, they're going to be up on those high ropes doing that final zip line. Are they going to be up this year, you guys? I'm hearing, the high ropes have been down at Camp St. Croix for the last couple of years, so we've had to go out to Eagan, but we take them because the culminating thing is they're up in the trees, and they get that final swing when they graduate. Community service. All of our kids are required to participate in community service, not a hard sell either. We just got done doing two things in December. We went to Second Harvest Food Bank with our older kids and feed my starving children with the younger kids. Culture, educational trips. The world is our classroom. We've got to get the kids out of school every now and then and to sample what's going on in the world and other settings. And we have such great access to the Twin Cities, so we get these kids, they're going to the theater in February. Each of the kids, there's two different plays we're doing. They often see live performance of, performances of things that we have just read in class. So it's a really nice pairing to the curriculum. And then entrepreneurship, I already talked about that. We keep going, every year, we've got a project. Rituals and traditions. I'm not going to talk about all these, but the top and the bottom one. There's rituals and traditions make culture rich and sustain a culture. And we have those same things in STRIVE, and that's what the kids come to know and trust and expect and know that other people don't have. This is what we do. First thing we do at the beginning of the year, we do an all-day event in September. It's called the Extravaganza. It's like a mini Olympics. Each team has a different grade level. They design their uniforms, their banners, they have events that are crazy, they have their coaches. And we compete against each other. That way, they're building community with each other, but also building community with cross-age. At that day too, we also have, every service provider comes out and spends time with them, from the principal to the counselors, to all the teachers, to the social worker, school liaison officer. So we've got quite a group out there playing with each other and having a great time. And we have kids consistently say, that was my best day of high school. I had a kid tell me once it was the best day of their life. Strive-a-queue is barbecue, bowling, all these things. And then donut, this is a culminating activity. We do senior banquet late May. We pile the kids into a couple different vehicles. We don't tell the seniors where they're going. And we take them to dinner and some other surprises, and then they end up at my house, which is a secret. But, oh, we got to go to her house, I'd like to scream some days. But we go and we have a giant family meal together. It's just the STRIVE teachers and the kids. And we share what we've all been through together. And it's moving, and it's important, and we look at each other like, this is why we're here, and look what we did together. It's really, really special. At that time too, we also hand them back their student time capsules they started in ninth grade. They collect things along their journey, and we give them back. And it's really gleeful when they open them up like, I can't believe I did that. And we put photos and everything like that. So it's something they can take away too from that experience. Now, this all sounds good, but does it work? Yes, it does. We've got excellent data. I'm so proud that I can say all this stuff is paying off academically. We have eighty-four percent decrease in the total number of course failures when the kids entered into the program. Ninety-seven percent assignment completion. That's amazing for kids that are often in mainstream classes. They might be lucky if they do twenty-five percent of their assignments. Takes a lot of work, though. It's a lot of work, but we get there. Ninety-eight percent, over ninety-eight percent of the courses are passed in STRIVE. The ones that aren't passing, it's a rare kid because that's the STRIVE expectation after past your STRIVE classes. We, once in a while, we'll have a student who's a non-attendee for a long period of time. So every now and then, we'll miss that there, a hundred percent, but I'm pretty proud of that. Now, I just did those, I just crunched these numbers on our current class, okay? And it's hard to compare eighth to ninth graders, but I said, I'm going to try. So I looked at their core classes, math, social studies, science, and English, and where were they a year ago? And that's their grade point average of the middle school goes, the average of the, and that's about D-plus, C-minus, okay? One year later, first grading period, ninth grade, they've gone up to a B-B minus. And this is the time when kids are supposed to be their most at-risk from eighth to ninth grade. That's a make or break transition, and if they're doing that with this program, we're doing something right. Behavior success. Are they acting out less, acting in less? Are they being contributing members of our school? Yes, they are. Kids that weren't served in ninth grade had an average of about seven and a half disciplinary refer, if you look in the records, seven and a half per kid, write-ups, after entering STRIVE, about one. Eighty-two percent decrease in disciplinary referrals. Attendance success. We're cutting that in half, unexcused absences and tardies, repeat tardies. Ninth without STRIVE, tenth once they come in. Fifty percent decrease. And that bottom line, our overall STRIVE attendance rate is ninety percent. That's our goal in the school. That's our graduation requirement for participation. We're making that. That's extraordinary. And then the most important thing, they're graduating, okay? The last five years, we've had a ninety-six percent graduation rate. Our school graduation rate is about ninety-seven. We're in line with the general population with at-risk kids. The last two years, we haven't had a drop-off. And we're always, you know, this year, you never know. You never know, but we're on track. We're on track. Now, we just, I, we're about continuous improvement, and I said, we got to do, we got to get direction for the future. Where are we going? Let's see where we're at. Let's see where our gaps are, areas of need. What are we doing well? I used a program assessment that they're actually piloting nationally right now, and it's got the twelve, it's got twelve indicators for quality alternative ed. And these are the areas that we are scoring real high in. I'm not surprised about number one, culture and climate. Students are engaged and they're connected. The kids love being in the program, and nobody wants to leave. Even when we think they're ready to leave, like, maybe you want to try some more classes on your own. No, I like it here, okay? People like being in the program. Staff likes being in the program. We are family. We're doing a good job, and we're all connected. Parent involvement, that's an ongoing goal for us, but if we can connect with these families, welcome them back in, make them our partners in education, I think we're doing a good job at that. We really target those ninth-grade parents to come to that first conference. I always say, trust me, trust me, trust me. I'm not going to those conferences. They've been bad for years. I don't want to go. I don't want to go. Trust me, come on in. And I tell my teachers, it's positive only. We're going to do all positives. Even if we have something negative, it's all positives we're talking about. And we get tears at those conferences. And what we've done is they've trusted us. They see it's going to work. They come back. And we've got partners then. And collaboration, we're connected to the community. We collaborate. We find connections. When they don't exist, we make them. People call us. We're vital members of the Hudson community. And we are connected, and our feelers are out everywhere, and we're really proud of that. We're going to keep that up. We always are looking for new ones, too. Now, areas of need. Staffing, just a little research for you. They say in any school population, about five percent of the population needs something different, okay? We should be serving five percent of our kids in a different way. We've got eighteen-hundred kids, a little bit less at the high school right now. So with five percent, we should be serving ninety students. We're currently student, as of this day, today, sixty-two students currently today, but we've served sixty-seven this year. Last year, we were mid-seventies, okay, with the same amount of staff, okay? Also, the second, so we need to serve more. There's a gap. There's a waiting list consistently. We also have little programs that are kind of popping up, and what they're doing are serving those kids that really, they're waiting for a spot in STRIVE, like guided study hall, things like that. Now, best practice guidelines say a twelve-to-one ratio when working with this population, okay? If you do the math, you should be serving ninety kids, and we should have seven and a half teachers, adults. We don't really care. We, if they're, I say adults, okay? Right now, our current ratio, eighteen-to-one with teacher to student. If we include our educational assistant, who's not even there full-time, we've got a fourteen-to-one. So we're still out of whack, and we're feeling it a bit. The second thing that we need to do, social work services. We do have a need for an appointed social worker slash counselor or both, I'll take them all, appointed to the program. We've been doing it the other way for a long time, where our kids access their grade-level counselor, and then they have to go to the counseling office online and do all that. It's very hard for them to access the help they need, and they're going to need more of the social work and the counseling. So it's hard for them to get that. We would like to have more of that. If something arises during the day, we serve as the social worker counselor, and we're great. We do a great job, but when I'm being the counselor, nobody's teaching my class. So it's difficult. Or the kids are in my class, their needs aren't getting met, they're upset, and where's the learning? So we want to, we want to have more services readily available for the kids so that they can stay in class. Crisis won't interrupt their learning. And the last thing, curriculum and instruction. We want to fill that full model, so we have all the required courses, but we also have been, had kids begging for electives. Can't I just take the art class in here? Can't I just have the class in here? We have some kids that don't want to go in regular classes, and right now, the model is they come for the required classes, but the electives, they have to go out. About a third of our kids. It's like, come on, you could do this? Two-thirds of the kids are okay going to their electives. They're fine. But there's about a third of them, and then if they have to have any mainstream classes, it's very difficult. So we need to fill that gap for those kids. That is all I have, and I will open it up for questions.
Mr. President?
Go ahead, Sue.
I was just going to say, maybe analogy is the regular general education program is like with the grain, and it's like you guys are going cross-grain, but you're still getting to the same learning objectives. So, bravo.
Yes.
Bravo.
Mr. President?
Yes, Rob.
So how much of the education is book learning versus project-based learning?
We do learning style assessments and just our observations and stuff over the years. Our kids are highly, they're kinesthetic learners by and large, so they need movement when they learn. So we have to incorporate that all the time. We know that they don't learn well just from books like that. Do we have books? Yeah, we have them. Do we reference them? Yes, we do. Are they our primary? Absolutely not. Lots of experiential stuff. Could we do more? Yes, we could. We need to do more. We always need to do more in different ways. I think we're coming along and getting, I've become a much better teacher in the STRIVE program. You have to be. You have to be on top of your game because you've got to do things in a bunch of different ways. You're not going to reach them. That old-fashioned way doesn't reach them. We already know that. It didn't work the first time, so why would we repeat it? So we're doing it in alternate ways. I can't give you exact amount, but a ton, a ton. How's that?
So if you could have one thing that would improve your program, make a dramatic difference, what would that be?
More adults. Okay, that's two, plural. I don't even, you know, we're looking, yeah, it's resources, but if we get more, we can do a better job with the kids that we have. I teach, I'm the coordinator. I teach first, second, third, fourth, and fifth hour. That means I'm not available to do a lot of the things, those other things that are needed to be done. So Megan Fritz, right now, she teaches two hours in the program and has an advisory. She's a regular ed teacher the rest of the day, so we're kind of going like this. We need, I'd take another teacher, but give me a social worker counselor appointed to the program too. It's a toss-up on that.
Thank you. Okay, if the designation is for ninety students, but you only have sixty-two, why don't you have more students then? What's stopping you from having more students?
Then we get the, the ratio would be too lopsided. Yeah. Best practices, we're already pulling further away from that.
So it's not that you don't have ninety at-risk students in our entire high school?
There's a waiting list for every class.
And I, yeah, I also view that there's a lot of student services at the high school where we're helping at-risk kids that are not necessarily in the program. I view our umbrella as, I think we could be better at having an umbrella where there's a different, a lot of different services. I see STRIVE could expand its umbrella and take on a couple different roles in different ways. Some of the kids don't need much. They need a supervised study hall, guided study hall. Other kids need self-containment. We don't have the capacity at this time to do the self-containment because we don't offer all the courses. We all know space is at a minimum, or premium. So I don't even want to talk about space because that's not a barrier. We're going to get there, right?
Okay. Well, you got to tell us. Is it a barrier for your program or not?
Yes, yes, yes.
The way that things are set up right now, it's a barrier, right?
Chris has a class. He and I, we share an old band room, and it was divided, but whoever put the divider up didn't do it dumb. but whoever put the divider up didn't do it down the middle, 'cause Cindy got a bigger room. Um, Chris's room, there are ours, he's got, how many, what's?
Well, one's seventeen and one's eighteen.
And, and the room is about half the room of a normal class, or half the size of a normal classroom. There are some guidelines that actually say square footage per student when you're working with kids at-risk. We're not even close to that. So yes, physically, we're kind of on top of each other.
Yeah, you're better when they're not on top of each other.
And we've moved backwards in the building with the, the old ABLE program. We've kinda taken over that computer lab. We, we share it with Guido. We, I mean, we are, we're using a hall right now with tables set up, when kids need to be, um, work quietly and isolated.
In addition to paid staff, I mean, the, the volunteer program, you alluded to Bruce and I doing it, it was, you know, I've done a fair amount of volunteer work in the community in different areas, but that's gotta be one of the most rewarding, was being a mentor at Strive, and I would really recommend it to our people in, in the audience. Yep, Butch Schultz, who's another member of our Rotary Club.
Oh, yes.
Butch has probably been doing it longer than I have. I, I did it for five years. I, now, one student, who was already a senior, really didn't like school, and getting him to school was a big challenge. Then, the next student I got assigned to, I was actually, had the benefit of taking from a freshman to, uh, through graduation, and to see somebody who was at risk of even, you know, making it to be a senior, then to go on and not only just be prepared for a career, but he actually went on to UW-Stout and go to college.
Amazing.
That was very, very rewarding, and I was almost as proud as when my own kids went, went to Stout, so.
Amazing.
Um, I would really encourage that. And it would be helpful, but even then, you could double the number of mentors you have, but you still gotta have somebody to coordinate all that.
That, that, and then when the mentors come in, and you guys have been mentors, where would you like us to go? And I say, take a walk, uh, find a corner, you know, that, that, so when the mentors do come in, a designated spot, where the kids can hang out with the mentors. But we're, we're using, we're very creative, the whole high school right now is very creative with our space, but we, it, we're, we ran out a long time ago, so we're using the hall.
Right.
We're using tables set up places. We're using benches in the cafeteria.
And we're not talking a huge time commitment either. I mean, if there's members of the community, we're talking an hour a week, or even a very other week.
Yep. I, yeah, I say the minimum, I say two hours a month, and, and that would, that would work.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just had a quick question on your comment about the third-year science and the health deficiency. What's the plan to address that, or is it in the works, or what, what's?
Well, those two, the math and science, we were able to staff one of them, and we had to pick which is a higher priority, and we really looked at the higher failure rate, so we added the intermediate algebra for the third year. And our kids now are having to mainstream, and like I said, we're gonna feel it worse next year when all four grades have to have that.
So it's a staffing need?
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And the health, the health, the kids have been going to regular ed health. You, we don't, they don't have to take very much. It's usually a quarter credit, so it's not a big commitment, but we're still getting a fifty percent failure rate. With a teacher who's very workable and good to deal with, so it's just the fact that it's not in with us.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Bruce?
Just a couple of quick comments and then a question, but, you know, I've had a chance to talk to some of the parents, too, and how some of these kids just need a different environment, you know? It's, it's, um, it's the opportunity to get that within a public setting is, is pretty unique, and, uh, you know, kudos to the work that you guys have done. We've, I've seen a number of presentations in this, and the work that you guys have done through the years. Uh, it's really spectacular. These are good kids. I mean, they have good hearts, uh, they wanna do well, and, and sometimes just being in a different setting really helps them, so it is pretty spectacular to see that. The, uh, change in transition for all juniors to have to take the ACT test. Are you guys, uh, yeah, and how, I mean, did you have some opportunities to kinda help prepare them for, 'cause that's a pretty significant undertaking?
A lot of them were very scared. I'm sorry, a lot of them were very scared.
Yeah.
'Cause they've avoided those tests their whole lives. Um, but then, I think, because we did a few practice tests, we did, you know, they were, that was my advisee group, my advisor time, was, a lot of it was talking about this, you know, don't freak out, that, yeah, there's gonna be things you're not gonna know, just don't, you know, I did a whole bunch of test prep kinda stuff, and some of them, you know, did pretty well, and, you know, some of them flamed out 'cause they panicked, you know? But they also, after they got done with it, you know, we'd talk about things, and they said, you know, it wasn't as bad as I thought it was gonna be. If I took it again, I think I'd be more relaxed now, and everything would be good to go, that kinda stuff, so. Yep. So we're, I mean, we're plugging away at it, and I know Mark's got the junior class this year, and they're, not Mark, Darren, and they're going at it right now, getting ready, so.
Yeah, that's great. Well, congrats. I mean, it really is an awesome program, and, uh, something at the community level we all should be proud about here at this school.
I wanted to add one thing about the standardized, group standardized testing is not the way we measure our learning in Strive. The kids, there, there's not huge incentive for them to do well. They do panic, so when I'm making, um, decisions, summative and formative assessment, I do not use group standardized testing with at-risk students. You will not get their best efforts, and they're not very authentic measures. So, yes, they do, they do belong, they do take them. Everyone does now, but I, are they a true measure of what our kids know and do? No.
All right. Any other questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, Carrie.
Uh, it sounds like an exceptional program, and appreciate your enthusiasm, efforts of all of you. You, you alluded to that there's a, kind of a less formal, um, type program in place at the middle school. Is there any long-term planning to have a more structured?
There was.
Program?
A while back.
I'm waiting. I, right now, we, and, hi, Ann. We, there hasn't been the continuity in the past from the middle school to the high school. I absolutely know there's an unmet need there, and it does make perfect sense to start, to connect them better. We could, there's compelling data about sixth grade at-risk indicators. The first thirty days of it, of the sixth-grade school year, you can predict graduation or not based on attendance in, in many, many students. Those first thirty days are very telling, so are the very beginning of ninth grade. But I always say, let's not forget about the sixth graders. They're screaming at that time. They didn't make that transition from an elementary to a larger school where they're switching teachers. So, um, I can't answer that middle school question yet. I'm very interested in that connection, though, and expanding.
I think it was like three or four years ago, we looked at it, but. Three or four years ago, it was kinda looked at, but because of things that were going on, it just kinda got lost in the wash, and, you know, it's definitely something that would help the district. I mean, it would help us in Strive at the high school. If we had Strive going on in the middle school, you know, we had, plopping along as we go, it'd be a good thing, I think. Yep.
Any other questions or comments, then?
I just have one quick comment, Mr. President. I wasn't a parent of a Strive student, but, uh, my family hosted a student that was in Strive for two years, and she was at-risk and stayed with our family, and I can't tell you enough how much I can thank you guys for her graduating, because I know it was because of the Strive program. So, thank you.
Excellent. All right. Anything else? Well, thank you very much for your, yeah, we, we've gotta move along, so. If you have questions for our instructors, feel free to ask them later. But thank you for your program, thank you for your efforts. And without further ado, we'll get up our independent auditor's report. Our presenters for that are coming up on the stage now, and.
Jonathan Sherwood, Audit Manager with Clifton Larson Allen, and Jonathan is in charge of the audit for the school district. And joining him is Mark Cumlin from Financial Services. Mark coordinates the audit and does a, does a very fine job of it. Uh, so Jonathan is gonna give you a kind of a summary rundown of the audit, and then answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time tonight. Um, as Tim had mentioned, I'm gonna keep my comments pretty high-level. The previous finance committee, myself, and then Brock Guyen, our principal out of the Eau Claire office, met with the finance committee and kinda touched things at a little bit more in-depth level. Um, so to get started here, first, I just, I wanted to take the time, the opportunity to thank Tim, Mark, and the rest of the business office staff for all their efforts, uh, dealing with us when it comes to the audit. Uh, they make things extremely smooth for us, so we definitely appreciate that. To dive right in here for you, uh, got a quick two-page summary, instead of having you flip back and forth in the seventy-page document that is our audit report. Uh, item one up here is just the auditor's report, our opinion that we issue. It is noted that it's a, we've issued an unmodified opinion, which we refer to as a clean audit opinion. It's the highest audit opinion that we issue as auditors, and it's actually the, it's required by DPI, so we, we're meeting that standard for you. You'll note that in the, if you do compare the current year financial report to previous years, you'll notice that there, the report did change pretty drastically from one year to the next, and that's due to two GASB pronouncements being introduced and applied this year. Uh, GASB sixty-eight and sixty-seven, not to get too much into it, deal with WRS and the, any liability that, or asset now that would, would go along with, with those retirement benefits. Uh, if you wanna take a look at those changes in the finance, or in the audit report, it starts on page thirty-five. I'm not gonna go over anything else there for you. The management letter itself, we do issue another report that stand alone from the financial statements, which is a report on the internal controls of the district in total. We do, along with that, we do issue one finding for the financial statements. Typically, most school districts in, that we audit, which is twenty-seven in the, in the area, most school districts get actually a total of three findings. Uh, the district actually just has one, which is a finding that basically states that Clifton Larson Allen prepares the audit financial, audited financial statements themselves. Uh, the, there's only one district that we audit that does not receive that finding, and that's because they have two former auditors on staff. From, from our standpoint, only having one finding is actually a pretty positive thing. Uh, it's pretty difficult to achieve and to mitigate all the other factors to eliminate the pretty common other findings that we issue. As part of the district's audit as well, we have to comply with compliance findings, which is a single audit report that the federal government requires us to check a bunch of different programs and make sure that the district's in compliance with those as well. We've actually issued no findings in relation to any federal or state programs this year. Uh, the district was able to eliminate a finding from the previous year, which was a result of a simple clerical error that was cleared up during the current year. So absolutely no concerns from any state or federal level at all. To go into some of the financial data that you see, uh, we do have a four-year comparison here, so you can actually do a little bit of a trend analysis over the last four years. Really, there isn't much from our standpoint that we really need to take a look at. It shows a pretty consistent trend. Couple items to note is, you will not see anything, there isn't a line item under there for short-term borrowing, which is a pretty positive thing for a school district of your size, where you don't have to short-term borrow to meet the cash flow needs of a district your size. You're able to keep cash reserves and everything throughout the year. You're gonna recognize a cost savings every year that you do that. Um, and I'm not aware of any, any point in the, you know, recent history that the districts need to short-term borrow. The other thing that I'll point out here real quick for you, too, is kinda jumping all the way down to the final, uh, line item there, is a measure of financial health of a district. There's a ratio that we typically compute, or, you know, always compute. It's a ratio of unassigned fund balance to total, uh, total expenditures of the entire district. And that's gonna be, uh, general fund expenditures, so Fund X and special education expenditures, Fund XXVII. So the ratio that's calculated is twenty-seven point four percent of unassigned fund balance compared, as compared to general fund expenditures. The policy that the district has, you know, um, adopted in the past is to have that level between twenty-five to a maximum of thirty percent. So you fall right in, in the, the level that you're shooting for, and it is a general guideline of, um, a typical rule of thumb, so to speak, that you should have at a minimum twenty-five percent in reserves that would show a district is in good financial condition. So, from our standpoint, we see that twenty-seven point four percent is a little bit higher than that. That's showing that it's in, uh, the, the district's financially healthy, and it's to a, an acceptable level. As I mentioned, we do audit twenty-seven other districts in the area, and the average from all the other districts is twenty-six percent, so just slightly higher, which is right in that ballpark that we wanna be in. The other two items to note up there, too, along with fund balance, are the committed funds that you'll see there. You've got committed funds for the self-insurance fund, as well as the secondary space, and then just the change, just to note the change between two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and fifteen. Some of those costs that related to the secondary space were, uh, the remodel and rehab of the school commons, as well as science labs. And I know that there's additional costs that, that work had not yet been completed as of June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, so there's additional costs that are gonna be coming in, out of that for two thousand and sixteen as well. If you flip over to page two here, this is just, um, a display of the rest of the funds of the district. Again, really not much to comment on here for you. The other funds of the district are also in relatively good shape. Uh, if you skip down to the, the debt service fund, you'll notice that there is two-point-five million that's sitting there at the end of the year. Those reserves are, are meant and set aside to meet the two thousand and sixteen debt service requirements. Then if you jump all the way down to item number six, which is just, uh, long-term debt obligations for the district, um, the ratio that's calculated at the bottom there is, there's a statutory limit, limit of how much debt the school district can legally have outstanding, uh, that, it's not conceivable for any district to come to a hundred percent of that legal limit. Typically, a very highly leveraged district, meaning that they're carrying a lot of debt, that percentage is gonna be about twenty to twenty-five percent. Typically, that occurs when a district's gonna have a major school construction project, and then from there, it'll go down to an average of about ten percent. So you can see that the district is currently at five-point-seven percent, meaning you, you really don't have a, you know, a ton of debt outstanding right now, so you're in a very good favorable, favorable position if you're gonna go out and be talking about doing some bonding projects in the near future. And that kinda also then translates back to my previous comments on unassigned fund balance, meaning that you've got a financially healthy district here, so when you are going out for, for bonding, uh, your bond ratings are gonna be quite favorable. And during two thousand and fifteen, you were actually able to use that favorable bond rating. Uh, they issued some refunding bonds, basically refinanced some debt, and, uh, they were able to recognize, um, about one-point-one million roughly in net present value savings for reissuing debt at more favorable terms. So other than that, if everybody has any questions for me, by all means.
Yes, Rob.
Maybe this is more of a question for Tim. Uh, Jonathan mentioned, uh, as far as the committed fund balance specifically for secondary space, we have noted the four-point-four-eight million. And we, during committee, we talked about that balance really being roughly three and a half, and I, Jonathan had mentioned that some of those costs for the science labs perhaps hadn't been accounted for in that, but there's some other things. Would you mind just running through that?
Sure, yeah. So, yeah, as Jonathan mentioned, at the end of June, on June thirtieth, we had the four-point-four-eight-one balance, and so we've got about three-hundred-seventy-five thousand additional costs that will come out, the completion of the science labs in the common area, so we wind up with about four-point-one million in that account. Uh, we use three-point-five, uh, as a figure when we're talking about bonding, uh, for, We use three point five as a figure when we're talking about bonding for, for a potential referendum. And we do have some other needs possibly for that money. Some of, some of the things you could use it for are additional contingencies, because not everything's built into the, the project numbers, so we'd look at that. We've got some other capital needs in the district, you could use it for that as well. But it's totally at the discretion of the board as to what those dollars are used for.
Any other questions of our auditor? Terry?
I guess this maybe isn't for the auditor, but Tim again, looking at the five point seven percent that we've got as percentage of debt limit, say if we did add another ninety million to our debt, what would that put that percentage at? Roughly?
I'll use a calculator. I should have anticipated that question, right?
And that's based on this equalized value, is that right?
Yes, the equalized value, and then there's actually a ten percent limit of the equalized value. And then there's certain debt that's not subject to that limit, such as the other post-employment benefits payable and the compensated absences are excluded from that figure.
And so the notice that we've gotten from the state that our tax base in our school district's going up to three point six-three billion, I guess, now that would then increase that from the three hundred and sixty-three million would be that ten percent limit?
Correct.
So roughly ninety plus wherever we're at now would be, what it would be? Roughly a hundred and ten million, so?
Yeah, depending on how you figure that out too, as far as what the, what the final number is, but...
Given the restructuring that we're going to be having and things falling off, maybe that's something you could estimate and get back to us here in a bit?
Sure. Yeah, I could, I can do that. Actually, after you make, once you make, if you make a decision tonight, we'll, we can recalculate that number for you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Right? Okay. Brian?
Yes. So, right, so depending on where you end the conversation tonight, in your example, you said if we add another ninety million to your existing, so your existing after payments in fifteen, was it nineteen million? You're scheduled to make another three million of principal payments, which would take it down to sixteen million, plus the ninety new hypothetical amount, puts you at a hundred and six. And then a hundred and six of your, based on a three hundred and sixty-four million-dollar legal debt limit, puts you at about twenty-nine percent-ish, somewhere in that ballpark as a rough figure off the top. But it puts you in that, that neighborhood.
All right. Thank you for, Brian. All right. Any other questions then of our auditor? Thank you, Jonathan, for your report.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Moving along. Next up, our topics for action. We always take up the consent items first, and I would entertain a motion with the spending language incorporated.
Mr. President, I move approval of the consent items and that the Director of Financial Services be authorized to pay bills in the amount of one million, nine hundred and eighty-five thousand, twenty-eight dollars and forty-five cents.
Second. Motion by Lynn, second by Rob. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent items are approved. Next item...
Mr. President, if I could briefly, it is that time of year for retirements. And so I just wanted to note that you guys did act on two retirements. One, both special education employees. One is an EA who's been in the district thirty years, and another is, hers, the name is Catherine Fagerness, and then the other one is Anne Goodlatte, and she's been in the district sixteen years. So just wanted to make that note.
Excellent. We thank them for their service. So any other recognitions then of the personnel moves we just made? All right. I think that it would be appropriate, since we have, we're going into a topic that could take hours and hours, so we'll take a short break and allow Matt to come up and set up. So we'll take a five-minute recess. Call the meeting back to order if board members could take their seats. Again, as I indicated at the beginning of the meeting, that we'll have an opportunity for system comments for each action item. We have four more action items, but the first one, we're having Matt Wolfert from Bray give his report, which is basically an update from our December fifteenth discussion of conceptual site floor plans.
Great, thank you, Mr. President. Good to be back. Board members, appreciate the opportunity to present the updated version of our December fifteenth discussion. So the book you have before you is really, as, as Jamie referenced, an update. A lot of the updates are based on board questions, community questions that we received at the December meeting. So I'll move relatively quickly through this. If you obviously have questions, please feel free to jump in, otherwise we will handle them during discussion. Tab one of your book is a, it's really reproducing the December fifteenth middle school site concept and floor plan concept. This is a two-house, two-story addition with a gym. If you recall on this concept, we were linking with some renovation back through the tech ed area to connect back to the current multipurpose room, and then linking through the current office and student services area back into the main corridor. So this concept was, I think it would work, it was well-received, but the question was, can we pare this back a little bit in terms of square footage? So again, that is tab one of your book. Tab two is a budget summary, so at the last meeting, members of the board asked for just a broader, higher-level summary by category. This is a little more extensive when we get to the high school piece of it, but what you have here in tab two is a summary of the middle school, so the, the first four rows are the December fifteenth plan, then we'll get into a twelve classroom addition, which I'll show you in a second, and a ten classroom addition scenario. You will see bottom lines, cost per square foot going up as the project gets smaller, and that directly correlates to the comment that Bruce made at the last meeting related to site costs, and some other fixed costs remain the same regardless of the square foot as you build. So it's really just a direct reflection of that comment which was made at the last meeting. This proves it out in, in spreadsheet form. Tab three is a floor plan that looks at the middle school, a two-story, two-house addition, but it would be six classrooms per house, and it would only connect in one specific location. So instead of connecting back through the remodeled tech ed area, what we would be looking to do here is only make the single connection through the office and student services area, a house concept with, in this case, six classrooms. And then what we would do is, to a certain extent, use the gym a bit as a corridor. We wouldn't want to encourage that movement, but in cases when the gym wasn't being utilized, students still could move through the gym to get to the eastern end of the building. It was a way to reduce costs, quite frankly, reduce square footage of new construction needed, a firewall separation needed, and reduce the amount of renovation that would be needed through tech ed to accommodate that. So this is a two-story, two-house addition with six classrooms per floor. Tab four will look very familiar to what you see in tab three. This is really a similar concept, two-house, two-floor addition with five classrooms per With a single connection through student services and office. Tab five is a bit updated in terms of site plan. Some of this should look familiar, the base site plan. This would be a site concept, as you see on the screen. First site image in tab five of your book is a concept with no athletics onsite, so this would not include an investment and improvement in any athletics at this, in this version of the site plan. It's a base master plan that could accept athletics, so you see in, in the screen now on the second page of tab five, what the site build-out could look like. You will notice a couple tweaks to this. One of the things that we have changed is we're really looking at the potential of turning the stadium north-south, squeezing the concession and toilet building in. This footprint is adjusted. When you see the budget, this is about four thousand eight hundred square feet. What we've done is taken all of the outdoor storage out of that building and have in turn increased the budget for the bleachers. So what we're going to do is proposing to do, if the athletic project is a component of it, would be to actually enclose the underside of the bleachers for that storage. It's a more affordable way to go about it than building, a, a building of a bit more significance to support that. This does still include all the toilet fixtures that we would need for the three thousand capacity in the stadium, and that's really done purely to not put the district at risk associated with either not being close enough, having a code interpretation that says you aren't close enough to existing bathrooms, or when we work with the city, if they're not going to allow you to bring in temporary fixtures for your major events. So this is still programmed, I think, in the best position for the district, that we can provide all of the plumbing fixtures if we end up having to do that after all approvals are gained. The other piece is that the emergency access drive read a lot like a road previously in the concepts you saw. What we're showing here is it would be, would remain an emergency access drive, connecting from the front of the building to the east side of the building, and it really could function day-to-day more like a plaza to support students during the day and events that would be held either in the building or in the multipurpose stadium. So it's really just a graphic change. We're still providing emergency access as necessary across this area, but it would double as that space, outdoor space to support events. Tab six are the floor plans, and these really look, should look very familiar. I will say we have reduced, we've kind of pinched and squeezed a few things on here to reduce the cost a bit. Hopefully, as you saw by comparison, I'll quickly point those out. We've squared off how we make the connection from the curving corridor to the existing building. We have removed a bit of a small amount of collaboration space, but times two stories, we've kind of squared that piece off. We reduced the depth of the vestibule. We shortened up the office area a bit. We revisited this program with Peg and her team, and felt that between student services being renovated here and this square footage for high school office, there was room to, to move that, I'll say the east wall to the west, to reduce that square footage. You will also notice in the previous plan, we had fitness and weights on the first floor here. When you look at the site plan, we are getting pretty tight, and so we needed to pull that back upstairs. So in this plan, we have weight fitness, as you'll see, above the office. So that reduced a bit of circulation, square footage here. And the other piece we did is we verified the programmatic needs for some of the things like the cafe, the concession, the school store, and the credit union. We were able to decrease the square footage and increase the size of this small light court here in order to reduce square footage. So those are some of the key areas we, I'll say, like I said, we just basically pulled walls and massaged the floor plan to reduce some square footage. On the second floor, you'll see we reduced the linking corridor that was connecting from all the way across the academic house. We still pick up the elevator here, so we're getting ADA access through the two-story academic wing, up to the track and up to the weight fitness room. We also do have an existing elevator that serves the current weight room adjacent to the locker room, so if we need to, we can ramp if we want to, decide as a group to do that, to get to this track as well in the future. So we have a lot of flexibility in, in the walking track configuration, because we do have elevators at two locations that could serve it. But we were able to reduce a little bit of new construction proposed up here as well in order to reduce square footage overall. And that, that directly correlates to the, the cost, obviously, as we budget the building. So those are really the key changes in the floor plan. Tab seven is a document that was requested. The district previously engaged an architecture firm, ATSR, to do a facility assessment of the building. So back in August of thirteen, they issued a report suggesting a lot of the existing needs related to the building. Most of them were infrastructure-oriented in nature. And so what you have here is a summary of what they had included in their recommendations, along with two columns, so the base solution, those two columns, yes or no, are referring to the floor plan and site plan you saw just now, and the budget, as we will look at in a second. So in general, I will say with, with only a few exceptions, we have included and had included previously all of the recommended improvements within the ATSR report. When we say no, make sure you take note of the, in the notes column. Often, we say it's not included in the base solution, but it is included in some of the optional other enhancements, whether it's an auditorium enhancement project or an outdoor athletic and recreation project. So in general, we do have the majority of the ATSR recommendations captured in some, one of the budgets. I'll touch on a few, and if people have questions, please obviously jump in and ask. Number five, as you see under exterior building envelope, the wall systems, that is one that we, we do not have in this budget. The ATSR report had the nineteen seventies, if I remember correctly, nineteen seventy-four concrete block walls proposed to be covered in, in an EPIS material. It was a really significant expense, and we believe there's more cost-effective ways to do it. EPIS would still be a solution, and we'll have to explore how we handle that, but we did not carry that full memory serving, right? It was a couple-million-dollar recommendation to skin that, and we think there's more cost-effective ways to handle that. So that is just, it's a bit of a discrepancy from what was included in that initial recommendation. Some of the other options, for example, number fifteen, cold storage rooms, refrigerators. We talked specifically to food service director, and she felt very comfortable with the current equipment as it was, so that's why it's not included here, based on a direct recommendation from one of your key staff members. HVAC, we feel very comfortable with, reviewed that with Randy, the HVAC engineer who was here previously. Plumbing, we reviewed with Julie from Mermon Engineering. She has reviewed the ATSR report. She has been to the building and verified that she feels confident we have all of the recommended improvements in the ATSR report included in the base budget. Electrical, reviewed Kirk from Mermon Engineering, have reviewed again, he's reviewed the ATSR report and been onsite. Sound systems is a bit of a yes and a no there. We have them included in the gym and the cafeteria. The, we do not have them in every classroom at this point. I don't know that we need them. There is something called classroom assisted, listening assistance devices. They're not in the budget currently, it's something that we could talk about if need be, it was not a specific recommendation of ATSR. Wanted to be clear there. And then the other, for the auditorium, for example, that is, a new sound system is included in the alternate budget there. Video production, we have offered in the auditorium budget. Lighting, again, we have all of the lighting covered, with the exception of theatrical lighting and exterior athletic lighting. Again, those are both offered in alternative budgets. And then the projection systems is one, to be clear, and we have all of the wiring included in our budget, so we would be pulling wire to, in power to ceiling locations if we want ceiling projectors or a wall mount, wall mount locations if we're going to go short throw smart boards in classrooms. We just do not have the hardware, so we don't have a projector, as you see here in this room, or a, a power drop-down screen in every classroom included. That's typically a piece of hardware. A, we have a fair amount of them already that we would simply be relocating from the building, and B, we typically don't put much of that into a project because it's not going to last twenty years. It's not going to last the length of the borrowing. We do have it included in some of the large areas, like an auditorium, where you have a large screen that needs power, needs to be hung from structure, for example. We have that included in the budget. So hopefully that helps draw a bit of a comparison to the ATSR report, so people can get a sense of, of how we compared there. Tab eight in the book is an updated budget. It looks the same as last time, really the total, it totals about eight hundred thousand dollars less, and that directly correlates to the reductions in square footage, the massaging of the plan, as we work with the team to do. The eleven by seventeen, the pullout piece at the end of tab eight is a summary again. This is something that was requested last time, to get a better sense of, of scope as we worked across each of the different types of renovation. So hopefully you find that helpful. Tab nine is the auditorium upgrades. That is the same as previously, I believe. Tab ten is the multipurpose stadium and tennis court flights, so we have, again, verified with Rettler Corporation on this project. You'll see some minor revisions to this. The biggest change really is the reduction in the size of the bathroom concession storage building, so that was a significant savings to the project. We also broke tennis, the new tennis courts themselves into a separate project, and softball, baseball on a separate project, so the earthwork and the utilities have changed slightly. We have increased the budget for the bleachers. You can see a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to enclose that for unheated storage underneath there, but that's still a significant savings to where we were previously. As you can see there, that project is proposed right now, it's just under six million dollars. And that is outdoor multipurpose stadium and lighting of the current tennis courts. Tab eleven is construction of baseball, softball, and new tennis courts. That is tab eleven. And then tab twelve is not anything to really discuss in detail, but it's a way, if you want to, as a group, we could start building referendum questions. I'd stop this at two, you can make it as many as you want to, but if we wanted to start putting projects in, taking reductions in square foot or, or costs associated with the middle school and other things, there'll be a way to somewhat easily, I think, move through, and as a board, see how different questions would total and what they would look like. There is a line on there for, for potential fund balance contribution. Please don't think I'm recommending that you put that in. That's absolutely a placeholder number. You can make that zero, you can make it whatever you as a board feel like, but the thought there is that this, hopefully this spreadsheet will make it a little easier to see all, a number of different scenarios, if you would like, in comparison to each other as we get into discussion.
Any other, any immediate questions before we turn it over for public comment? If there are any people who have asked, requests to speak on the side, board members? Otherwise, there's always going to be time for questions after as well. All right? Not seeing any, then I guess, do we have anyone that's requested to speak on the side?
I'm Maria Acubey, sixty-one, Daisy Circle.
Hi, I'm Maria Kuli, 61 Daisy Circle. Um, one of my questions is just, I just have a question on what you were just discussing for the updating of the school. You were mentioning stuff, uh, stuff like the hardware, for example, smart boards is included in the price, but not, I mean, sorry, the wiring's included in the price, but not the hardware, so that those, there's going to be costs that the district would need to budget for above what the referendum is requiring, or has the district already included that in the referendum pricing?
It is not included in, in the pricing as we have it structured now, but keep in mind that because we are expanding and remodeling a current building, we have a lot of this infrastructure, we have smart boards, we have projectors. We're not just going to throw those all away and start over. So we're just going to relocate the majority of those to new or remodeled classrooms. So this is very different. When you build a new school, when you built this building, you had no technology to bring with it, correct? That was all a new investment. So it's far more critical that there is a robust technology budget when you're undertaking a new building and bringing it online versus a project like we're considering here where we're really going to be, the majority of these rooms will be equipped with repurposed technology.
Okay, my other question is, um, I'm not sure what the final decision is based on the referendum questions, but I'd like the board to consider possibly having, um, another part to the referendum. Basically, what, uh, what has been, what I've heard and what people have been talking about is upgrades are crucial. People, people feel like the school has not had, seen upgrades over the last 10 years, and we need them. It's, it's critical. Um, some of those people feel that there's no need for an addition, and some feel there's a need for both. And so my concern is if the referendum question goes in as a whole, with upgrades and addition at the 78 million, and if it fails, then we won't get our upgrades either. And some people who really want the upgrades but don't want the addition may not vote for it because they don't want to see the addition. So my concern is that the number one priority, obviously, people feel need space issues. I'm not here to discuss that tonight, but what I'm, my concern about is that I know the majority out there feel we need upgrades and we need fixes done to our schools. And so I'm, I fear that if it goes as one question, that won't happen either, either if it goes down or back to square one. But if we're able to split it into two questions, those that want both can vote yes on both, and you'll still have the end result of upgrades and addition. So I just want the board to hopefully think about the possibility of if it fails, we've now gone yet another how many years without doing what needs to be done in our current situation right now. So, thanks.
All right. Any other citizen requests to speak on this agenda item? Not seeing any? Then I turn it back to the board and would suggest that we, uh, just note that, uh, when Dr. Olet and I set the agenda, that, um, it was purposely set so that we discuss all items at the same time, um, you know, first, and then we'll break it out into a motion eventually. But that's why the number said 93.14 million was so that all items get discussed interchangeably. We're still under Robert's rules of order, I'll just remind board members. And, but we do have bond counsel here who assisted in, um, drafting, I think, what are basically nine resolutions, different combinations, um, and with blanks, of course, for dollar amounts, because that's up to the board to decide. So, um, I guess with Matt staying up here, I guess during this discussion, um, I'll kick it off to anyone who wants to start the discussion.
Question, Mr. President?
Yes.
And I'm not sure, Matt or Nick, but, uh, at the middle school, you know, there are some options here as far as reducing, or rather, 12 classrooms versus what the original concept was, and then dropping to 10. What are the, what is the, what are the houses today? How many classrooms?
The houses are currently five and a half, I guess would be the best way to put it because of the way the building's designed. Uh, so each base house has five, and then there's a classroom that kind of is in between the two. Um, the answer, we use it as kind of an ancillary classroom, so for elective, German, Spanish, special ed, you know, those types of classes are dispersed throughout the building.
So what, what would be best, I'm, I'm sure everybody's been talking with Ann at the middle school, is, is five classrooms per level, is, is the 10 acceptable? Or is 12 going to meet our, our requirements from an education perspective?
What I can tell you is we have 13 teachers currently on carts, and we're utilizing four classrooms in Hudson Prairie, at least three classrooms in Hudson Prairie. Um, so obviously, and in addition to that, we have special ed, uh, students that are receiving services, both in closets, uh, areas of the building that are designed to be closets, and also areas of the building that are designed to be PE storage. Uh, so, um, although 10 classrooms would be great, 12 classrooms would be great, um, we will make work, what we can try to make work, we would prefer 12 classrooms, because I think it, what's happened is we've uncovered kind of the different layers of the onion, is we found that not only do we have a situation where we have teachers on carts, but we also have people in areas of the building that were never designed to host students. And so if we could, uh, if the board was, uh, be willing to go with 12 classrooms, we definitely would utilize that space. Um, and that would not guarantee, though, that all teachers would be off carts, just so everybody's clear, and that would not guarantee that, that we would be for sure out of Hudson Prairie. Uh, so, one of the things that, that is, I think, important for people to understand is, these are very conceptual, very preliminary plans, and, uh, we're just trying to account for square footage. So, uh, what may be the square footage for essentially six classrooms to design develop may end up being five classrooms per level at the same square footage as we continue to work through that. So, um, nothing on the resolutions would say to build a two-story structure with six classrooms per floor, you're just essentially trying to add in the square footage at this point.
So the, the white elephant in the room is, you know, we, we should build to need, which gets us back to the, and I've been struggling with this, the, the demographics studies that we've had. Do you have any thought, I mean, there's been, there was an article in early December that talked about the city Hudson, the town of Hudson, and this fantastic growth they're going to experience. We have our demographic studies that contradicts that. We, earlier tonight, you talked about the, um, kindergarten grouping larger. Uh, what are your thoughts? I mean, where are we going population-wise? I mean, any, any thoughts?
Well, you know, I, I think it's, um, yeah, it's really hard to say. Our, our best data that we have is our demographic study. You know, that was the most complete look at, at the long-term point of our district. And I think the demographic study, what the demographic study did is it pointed us in a direction that we probably don't need another building. And I think that was, uh, you know, a key factor for the demographic study. But we also have what we, what we know to be true in our buildings right now and our current needs, um, which, what's, what we're showing right now, and it was unofficial numbers, uh, that I shared with you this morning, uh, that we have, but we're up anywhere from 40 to 70 kids from where we were last year in the district. You know, originally, our demographic study was showing us to be down, uh, some students. And so, uh, one year does not make a trend, and I think that's important for everybody to understand, just because we happen to be up this year doesn't mean we're going to be up every year. But, uh, one of the things that's interesting about this project is over the, this is a three-year project between the high school and the middle school, is, uh, by the time we would even get, should the referendum, should you go for referendum in April, should it pass, uh, and we start design development phase, I would imagine we wouldn't even get to construction drawings till almost December, maybe January, by the time we get the design development. So by that point, we will have another kindergarten class that will have come, we will have another set of birth rates that we'll be able to look at, and we'll be able to continue to update the data so that we'll know that, hey, was this a one-year fluke and we need to scale back prior to heading into, uh, construction drawings, or we're starting to see a trend where we are bouncing back. So, I guess what I would tell you is, I, I think right now, um, we are holding steady in enrollment and probably doing better than what the demographic report originally said, but again, one year doesn't make a trend.
Do you have any comment on that article that was in the, uh, Hudson Star Observer talking about the dramatic growth of the city and the town, by chance?
Yeah, the article you're referring to is, uh, from, uh, I think it was from November, a November article, the Hudson Star Observer, and, and what it showed was, um, you know, 50 to 60 percent increase in the population of the city of Hudson over the next 25 years, and then about a 35 percent increase in the population of the town of Hudson, I think, somewhere around there, over the next 25 years. Um, and those were numbers that were put together, I believe, by the state, uh, and their, and their agencies. Uh, they are the numbers from what I understand that the city and the county and the townships are using to do their planning. As Tom Glassby said when we went through this process, uh, demography is as much an art as it is a science, and you're having to make some certain assumptions. So, um, would I find it hard to believe that the town and the city would grow that much and the school district would shrink the way he says it's going to shrink? I would think there's a serious disconnect between the two sets of data. I mean, that's, uh, I'm not a demographer, uh, nor do I claim to be. So, yeah, I think it gives us some sense of pause if other public entities are using data that says we're going to grow, um, that would give us a sense to, you know, cautiously move forward.
Um, Mr. President?
Yes.
I'll just kind of build on, um, Rob's, um, inquiry. Um, you know, the, and, and as Dr. Olet said, you know, it's still kind of a mystery to look at numbers that are, you know, in the future, but there is tremendous evidence of the incredible need that we have right now in the middle school to get the 13 teachers into their own rooms and off carts, which I think is just an egregious way to, uh, try to teach, uh, children. And, um, and I know that there's some pushing and shoving of space going on in, uh, already even in some of the other, um, houses, and I think some of the space has been compromised a little bit with lockers and that kind of thing, some of the common space. So I think that we, if, if we don't want to just look at future numbers, let's look at the evidence for what we need now. And, and I know that, um, the community doesn't want us to come back to them again in a few years and say, oh, I guess we need two more houses, or we need, you know, six more classrooms. So I think as, as fully as we can, uh, solve the problem now and completely, um, you know, I personally am very supportive of, uh, the two houses and the, and the, was it six classrooms per house? Uh, I'm fully supportive of that, because I think we need to always be looking ahead and not just exactly, uh, you know, what we think we're going to need. Thank you.
Any other questions? I mean, we're, go ahead.
I would say Ditto Sue. And may I say that I've already gotten a request for names? Griffin Door and Ravenclaw.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would concur with Sue in not wanting to come back to the public five years, 10 years from now, whatever it is. Any number of years, I think it's too many if, if we are talking about trying to fix this problem that we currently have and have some flexibility for growth in the future, I think we need to look at the 12 classrooms in our solution. The cost savings just isn't enough to have to come back, and coming back will just cost the taxpayer more later.
Well, I guess I had a, my question would be, when we put this out for the survey and we had basically the thought of doing one-story additions at the middle school and high school, Matt, that was your original cost estimates back in September? And I know that we've had the developments with the demographics and whatnot, and Dr. Olet's already mentioned that one year doesn't make a trend, but, um, what I'm looking at is trying to stay as close to our survey, is what we told, um, you know, the public that we were proposing. And that range was, uh, got the survey here somewhere. Which page is that? Page 12, all right. Well, 79 to 86 was for the two together, I guess. And, there it is. The breakout was on page 10. All right, so, page 10, we said estimated cost range for the high school renovation and addition was 71.9 to 77.9, and at the middle school, seven, 7,270,000 to 8.2 million. And I understand that then adding the second story gets us another house essentially, so that, and it puts us in a position where we're still going to have teachers on carts. We may still be using a few, uh, classrooms at Hudson Prairie, but what's the difference between, you know, doing the one story now and one house? We're saving roughly a million, is that right? By, by taking that second story off and then trying to come back later and do it at a later date?
You know, I did not do the specific analysis. I, I think it's fair to say, when we looked at the high school, uh, we actually talked to the structural engineer here, he estimated about $100,000 to $150,000 of additional below-grade infrastructure, uh, footings, foundations, rough structure to support a future second floor, um, slight increases in cost and insulation and other things related to that type of construction, um, for the base project. Um, I think the biggest thing that you run into is obviously inflation, estimates anywhere from 4% to 8%, depending on who you ask. Um, that's a critical piece. Remobilization, there's a significant amount of mobilization built into this project regardless of whether you build two stories or one. Uh, and then I think the other piece is just the, the ease of constructing on top of a building. That has to be a summer project, you're not going to build on top of five or six occupied classrooms on the first floor. And, uh, there, we do our best to make those watertight, uh, but you still have, eventually have some damage within the existing building that you have to repair when you do that construction. None of those, I'm suggesting, are deterrence to not consider that. Sure is an option, building a house today and, and investing in the foundations and the rough structure to support a future second floor. Uh, that absolutely is an option, um, and, and one to consider if you would like.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Is this discussion that we're having right now, does that account for why in the original, in the survey, we told people it would be 79,000, I think it was 79,86 square feet, and it is now, just for the high school, a 118,290? Is that because we added a second floor, all of that additional square footage?
At, at the high school, a big portion of that was the second story at the high school. So at, so at the middle school, the increase in square footage at the middle school is also because we added a second, a second story.
So that increases the cost also?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I just would comment that I think at a number of meetings that we had about the, uh, survey, we agreed that we were going to try to stick to the, to what the survey said. So there's quite a bit of additional square footage here from what the survey said to what we are now proposing, and just want to point that out.
Well, and certainly for the high school, I mean, there would be at the middle school, but I, um, somewhere, I don't know, I had a square footage figure at the middle school for doing the one house, but obviously, what I'm looking at is the additional cost of doing it at a later date. And you're talking about ripping off a roof and having to then build on top of it and then installing a new roof. So there's, you got the incremental savings of just doing it right at the beginning.
Oh, one other question, Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, when we originally started this process, I had asked for some information, or I had mentioned that I thought it would be good to, for us to look at, is there any way we can utilize any additional rooms out of Prairie for the problems that we have at the middle school? Seeing as how our elementary grades are so low, we have additional room. Um, at the last meeting, I asked Matt if that had been done, and he said no, that he had not done that. Is there any plan to look at that before we go ahead with what, what we're proposing for the middle school? Is there any plan to look at how we can utilize additional space out of Prairie to solve these middle school problems, which will self-resolve in about four years with the smaller classes coming up?
Um, well, it, it, there's about another classroom we could take from Prairie that we believe is still open, but what happens is, although we have space at the elementary capacity, and we've talked about this on several occasions, it's not necessarily all at, at Prairie. So in order for us to free up additional classrooms at Prairie to utilize at the middle school, we would have to re-boundary our elementaries so that we could redisperse additional students to the other elementaries, to shrink the number of sections that we have at Prairie, to free up additional classrooms at Prairie, to be able to utilize that for the middle school.
Okay, so we don't have enough, we don't have enough empty rooms?
There's not enough empty rooms at, at Prairie to do that. So there's, I, we have the flexibility-
Without re-boundary.
Without re-boundary. So Prairie's about a three-section building, so essentially what would happen is we'd have to try to turn that into a two-section building. The way you turn it into a two-section building is you redraw district boundaries for the elementaries. You don't just take Prairie kids and send them all over the district, you got to re-boundary all of the buildings so that you can up their enrollments and decrease Prairie's.
That explains it. That explains it. Thank you.
Yep. Any questions about the plan at the high school meanwhile? We've got roughly a little less, under than, under a million that was taken off from the preliminary budget. But we should, I just wanted to make one point. It was emphasized that these are conceptual plans and this project, should the referendum pass, would then, we're going to do the RFPs for a project architect and then the architect has to design it. And the board has control over what gets designed. And so if we opted to go back to a one-story addition at the middle school, we could do that. And then you would bid that out of the contractors, correct?
That's correct.
All right. And you've seen that done at other schools where, I mean, they, usually it's the other way around. They set a dollar amount and then they find out later that they haven't spent, figured enough money and then they got to somehow cut from the project in order to get it under the dollar amount.
Yeah, and I think the legal question we could defer on, I think there is an intent question as you as the board go forward. If it is your intent to build a two-story classroom addition at the middle school, if that's where we go, and you elect after the fact to build a one-story instead, or maybe it's a one-story with eight classrooms instead of six, or whatever solution you as a board land on, the question would be, what do you do with the difference in dollars? Was it your intent as a board to pay that debt down, not borrow it? So I think there's a bit of a PR component of it as well, as if you commit to it, if the community supports it. Most boards tend to say, if we committed to it, the community supported it, we're going to build it because that's what the community wanted us to do. But it doesn't happen all that often. Plans almost always look very different in final form than referendum form. So it's an important point.
Well, and I think the important piece is, is maybe not something that drastic. So instead of 12 rooms, it might end up being 11 rooms or 10. But I would think it would be a very big credibility issue with the community if we said we were going to do something in this range and then we turned around and cut it in half after a referendum. No different, you know, if we did the others. So I just, it's one thing if, you know, we were planning 22 classrooms in the addition at the high school and in the end we end up with 21 or 20, that's one thing. But if we were planning 22 and we end up with eight, you know, that's, I don't think is a good position to be in. That would be my advice, that you don't want to do that.
So if I, Mr. President, if I may, I guess, build on something, a question Sandy had. If, if the intent is to follow the survey, how did the additional square footage come about today versus what it was during the survey? Because likely our communities can be asking that question.
Absolutely. And I can answer it a little bit and then defer to Matt as well. You got to remember when we were originally designing these plans or these concepts, there were 22 of them that we were in the process of doing. And so trying to work through at a very, very high level what the different program was for each of these concepts and then the amount of actual square footage needed to run through these programs, it wasn't until we started digging even a little bit deeper and we got down to three, three plans, that we were able to dig down a little bit deeper and realize, okay, we need some additional square footage to be able to add that flexibility in the 21st century and things like that because we were taking out spaces that were currently, let's say, three classrooms and now we're making them two classrooms. So we have to add classrooms back in and addition versus just adding a one-for-one type of thing. And so that's where it started to grow a little bit. But where we saw some savings on the other end is we were planning kind of worst-case scenario, kind of high-end on some of the other things, the remodels and things like that. So we were able to keep it cost-neutral, actually bring it down about 900,000 underneath what we were originally thinking it was going to cost. Matt can probably speak to it more.
No, that's a good summation. In the mean, if we look all the way back at 22 or 28, I can't remember how many options we had. We were really basing all those solutions on the regional square foot per student average for a middle school and a high school. That's kind of, as a group, what we agreed to use as a planning benchmark so that we were comparing apples to apples between a remodeled building to a new building. How much do we add to a building? And that's where I think we got into, and we always knew this would be a bit of a challenge. We took the existing high school. We said we were going to plan for 1,800 students or whatever the number we decided was, took that times the regional square foot per student average and then simply just subtracted the entire existing building from it. Did that didn't, anywhere in that equation take into account inefficiencies of the current building? It didn't take into account additional program space, programmatic needs that you as a district have in your high school that are atypical from the regional average. We heard from Strive, good example. Great program, need some square footage. We have it accommodated now in the plan. I don't know that that would have been reflected in a regional average square foot per student. So it really is, is the result of honing in on a detailed, more detailed design to make sure, and working with staff to make sure we have the appropriate educational spaces accommodated.
Mr. President, Nick, can you say what you said before again? That if I'm understanding this correctly, the way we got additional square footage from what the survey said is we found dollars in the survey dollars that we weren't going to spend, that we didn't need to spend? Some cost came down somewhere, so we added more square footage, so we could use up the money? No?
No, no, that's not what happened.
I thought I better get this clear in my head.
No, no, I'm glad you, I'm glad you asked that. No, as we fine-tuned it, as Matt said, so we just had overall dollar amounts. And we never, we never, once we started to refine, and Matt did this as far as the dollar amounts, we never looked to try to get to a dollar amount. Oh, hey, we put out 79 million, so let's get to 79 or 77. It was, let's dig into this program, make sure we have all the things that we need in the program and how are we going to make that work? And also let's look at HVAC, electrical, plumbing, things along those lines and make sure instead of a blanket, let's replace and tear out everything everywhere, let's dig into this a little bit as well. And so what ended up happening was it ended up becoming actually somewhat cost-neutral in the end versus tearing everything out and adding the additional square footage, which would have caused the price to go above the survey.
So we decided not to tear everything out? That gave us additional dollars to add square footage?
I don't know if it would be additional dollars because we didn't quite know that number until the program was done.
The survey figures were a certain amount.
They were blanket figures based on.
We decided not, we didn't need to tear out this stuff. Then we had the actual dollars to be able to add more square footage.
Yeah, but we did, I think it's fair to say, we did not go seeking additional dollars so that we could put more square footage in. The square footage increase grew out of refining a floor plan and working with the high school leadership and district leadership to better define the educational needs. That's really what drove the increase in the addition. What made up for the savings was during the survey process, the pace that was moving it, we were applying a general cost per square foot for plumbing, HVAC and electrical systems across the entire building, square footage of 298,706 square feet, I think, if I remember correctly. We didn't need, let's say, a whole new HVAC system across the whole existing building. We saw that document last time where we pared that scope back.
Right.
Didn't, we just didn't need to do that. You had already made investments where the systems were appropriate. So in the end, the educational needs drove the addition up, but we were fortunate, and this doesn't happen in most cases, we were fortunate to be able to reduce the investment in plumbing, HVAC, electrical. The other piece is we never had civil engineer engagement budgets previously when we were doing the survey estimates. It was quite frankly a $25 per square foot of building area. That's not the way you budget a site, but it was the only way to budget a site when we had 22 options and we're moving at the pace we were. We did that, we were conservative on purpose. So that's another area. When we have a detailed design and an engineer involved, we were able to find some savings. But it's critically important that we didn't find savings for the intention of loading the new addition. They were done independent of each other, educational needs worked with the building leadership and district leadership and detailed analysis of the existing building.
Yeah, and I didn't mean to insinuate that it was purposely done-
No, I know.
-to get more square footage. That's not what I was asking. I was just wondering how we could afford more square footage in the survey when we said we were going to stick to the survey. This is what we had and this was the dollars and all of a sudden we've got this for the same dollars. And I was trying to figure out in my head how that could happen. I have another question. The amount of money for the school, the high school now is 76, almost 77 million dollars. In the survey, there was, I believe, about 30 or 31 million for the ATS and R stuff that we need to do, that absolutely has to be done for the high school. So that leaves about 45 to 46 million that is really allocated to changing the rooms, taking out walls, making better learning spaces, adding on, all of that. But our capacity is only going to go up to like 1,800 students, I think is what it said in the survey. So I'm wondering, I'm trying to wrap my mind around this, it's probably legitimate. I just can't understand why we're, why we would spend 45 to 46 million dollars for capacity for 120 extra students? Because our building right now accommodates 1,679. If we're spending 46 million and we're only going to accommodate 1,800, that, I'm having a problem with that. I'm not saying the work doesn't need to be done. I'm just saying I'm having a hard time understanding only 120 student increase for that kind of money.
That's a good question. I think we look all the way back to the needs, needs assessment report and study that was done that suggested that the current high school with the student population you were serving was already undersized. So if we look back and I don't have, I've got a draft version of that report, I don't have the final version here, I believe it's still available on the website and elsewhere. That report suggested that we were well below the regional average on a square foot per student basis in our current building. So the investment to make the building larger is not just to accommodate 120 more students, it's to, I'll say more appropriately, serve the current students you have and get you closer to the regional average on a square foot per student basis.
Well, let me ask this question because this was my question back in December, is what's the impact on capacity? You couldn't, you didn't answer it last time because all these things were changing and everything. But I'll ask the question again, is what's the functional capacity of this building using a utilization rate range that's typical?
So this is always a challenging question and I'm not going to try to punt and not give you an answer. We have built and programmed this building around that 1,800 target, which we had discussed previously as the goal. The key to a high school, and it's different in an elementary school, the key to a high school is getting the core right. We talked a lot about this during the needs assessment phase. Cafeterias, gymnasiums, locker spaces, kitchen areas, arts, music, bands, et cetera, things that every student needs. Classrooms you have a bit more flexibility with when it comes to programming. If you, if Hudson grows phenomenally and you need 2,000 students in the future, I don't know if you're going to need that or not, but if you do, programming classrooms is easier because you can start to program them more periods a day. We have some flexibility, we have some flexible classrooms built in here that we could use. You can make a classroom and office and then you could use the classrooms more throughout the day. So key is core capacity, which is a target of the board. We have metric goals for core capacity with the concept as presented. The classroom capacity has a bit more flexibility and it would be very dependent on scheduling and the model you use for teachers having a classroom versus teachers being in an office.
Well, with these capacity numbers that we've had and we've been looking at for years, I mean, I've always been skeptical of anything that has a number of 1,679. I mean, it, you don't have capacities that work that finite, you have ranges. That same capacity was figured to be 1,400 and all they did was move the administration out of the high school and all of a sudden, instead of 150 extra seats, all of a sudden we had 270 or something like that. And it was just a matter of how you use utilization rates, how often you're using. Obviously, we have 1,800 kids in a building that's designed for a 1,679 capacity classroom, but that's not our core capacity. Our core capacity is more in that 1,400 area, correct?
I would agree.
All right. So we want to get that up into that 2,000, but getting back to the survey, we are adding more classrooms with this design for only a few more million dollars than what was in the survey and we are adding more classroom capacity than 1,800, correct?
Depending on the scheduling model, I would agree. You can accommodate more students with a scheduling model.
I would hope so because I don't want to approve a referendum amount and ask our public to approve it and then the day that the project is done, we're still undersized. And we already know just with short-term growth that we're going to be close to 2,100 students in five years. So why would we do classroom capacity at 1,800? I mean, that's, that's the question that I ask.
Mr. President, I have one more question and then I'm going to keep quiet and let Carrie here or someone else ask questions. And I don't want anybody to misunderstand the direction of my questions. I'm not questioning the need to do this work at the high school. I have spent days going through this information and you all know that, that's how I work on this board. I study it. These questions that I've come up with are just things that I need to clear up in my mind before I can decide what's going to happen here. The last thing that I noticed in respect to this 1,800 students, which I saw in the survey and wondered, well, why are we spending this kind of money to get 1,800 students? When I saw the new plan come out, it had 28 classrooms in the high school, 28 new classrooms, 14 on each level, correct?
In that addition, correct. But it's a net add of 10, I believe. Is that where we landed?
A net of 10.
Net add of 10 classrooms.
From what we currently have.
Because we're losing them throughout the remodeling and elsewhere in the building.
Oh, because it looks like 28.
That is, I'm glad you're asking. It's a great point. It's a net add of 10, the way the plan is currently drawn.
Okay, because we have, what, what's our class size in the high school? 25 students?
We'd say on average.
Okay. So if we have 28 classrooms new, 25 students, that's, that's another 700 students for a total of 2,379. And so the figures still weren't working for me. 1,800 and now 2,379. 10 would give us 250, so that's still more than the 1,800. That's like 1,929.
You would typically program that at about 80 to 85%, I would say as well, because you're not going to use that classroom every single period of the day.
Okay, all right. All right. Thank you. You've answered all my questions, cleared up all the things that I was concerned about. Thank you very much. Now I'll shut up.
You don't need to shut up.
What did you say?
I said you don't need to shut. That's fine. Mr. President?
Yes.
To, you know, just kind of build up a Sandy's point because I think we've had a lot of good discussion in some of our separate meetings. But in addition to, you know, the ATS and R of the 3031, you've got additional enhancements, you know, site enhancements, et cetera. Those are flat costs that are going to be there. You've got architect fees that are also added, you know, that's a 5% flat, totally negotiable rate, right?
Negotiable, but a very important part of the budget.
Just joking, I'm joking. But it is part of the budget. You know, there are things here that are just going to be there, they're fixed. And I think we've talked a lot about that. So it, it does help to see the way some of these things are broken down. I also just wanted to make mention, and I'm glad you brought it up, you know, the extensive work that went into all of the pre-work within the community, as well as, you know, we had a couple of different reports. We had a report on the middle school, we had a report on the high school. We talked about the needs, the programming, the kids, which are ultimately the ones that we need to be focused on here. And those things all do get taken into consideration. I mean, you spent time and hours through all of these reports and, you know, tried to take all of that into consideration as you've been building these plans out. So, you know, I think it's, it's good, it's comprehensive, it does cover a lot of different areas and needs. You know, I think we sometimes get pretty caught up in the numbers and just a number. And it's frankly what's most often talked about in the community as well. And that's, it's understandable, but it does come down to the programming and how we're going to be able to deliver what we need to deliver here within the community as well. So I think those things are good to have a part of our assessment.
Mr. President? Rob? I guess for my edification, did I, Carrie, do you want to go? Sorry. For, I guess just for my edification, because I'm sure, you know, people at home are thinking, my gosh, you know, there's, this thing seems to be a moving target. And so what I'm hearing, I think, is this, from a process perspective, you know, we, the team sat down with PEG and 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 talked about programming, you know, 21st century education, what are, what are your needs given how education is, is changing? We heard from the Strive group earlier and their project discussions, programming discussions we have, they're happening in the hallways, in the cafeterias and so on. And so education continues to change its, its format and that requires a little bit more space. And we're not talking about a Chevette, which is probably beyond a lot of the younger people maybe listening tonight. And it's certainly not a Cadillac. It's probably more of a Chevy Malibu, if you will, from an education perspective. I hope that works. Middle of the road, from a, from a dollars perspective, to afford our district, the education, to be able to continue to do the wonderful things that the Strive group is doing and throughout. Is that fair? Is that fair? Am I missing something?
Say we classify that maybe the Malibu with the leather package. Just from a standpoint, we don't want to undersell this, I mean, this is a very nice addition renovation. I don't want people to think that there'd be all this money stuck into this building, and then it would look the same as it does now, just with fresh paint on the walls. I mean, it's a pretty extravagant renovation. Extensive is the better word, not extravagant. Extensive renovation, so I want to make sure that people understand that. It's not, you know, people talk about lipstick on a pig, this is not lipstick on a pig, we're changing the animal. I mean, it's a totally different animal we're doing.
Go.
Carrie?
Go, Carrie, go, Carrie.
Quick question.
Okay.
I apologize if you answered this. When you said you were building for the core areas, so are the core areas for eighteen hundred or for greater?
Slightly larger. And the cafeteria is the key one. The kitchen's fine to support greater. Fayed, we would have significant space with fitness center, three basketball, or four basketball courts, gym stations available, so we're fine there with a little bit of growth, because that's really focused more on other programming.
Oh, like nineteen hundred or two thousand?
Yeah. You know, we'd have to draw every cafeteria table, and you could go from circular tables to rectangular tables and increase the capacity of your cafeteria at some point, so I feel confident saying you've got flexibility there as well.
Thank you.
Question, Mr. President. Five percent contingency built into this right now?
Plus a one percent estimating contingency, so technically six, yeah.
The bonding, how much risk do you bring into something like that, and if you put more risk into it, what sort of savings does it bring for us? So for instance, we just saw a quarter of a point increase, right? We had a one percent increase, a one percent contingency in our numbers, if I'm not mistaken, so that one percent was in net like one point one million per ten million over that twenty year bond, if I'm not mistaken? And I'm pulling that from the top of my head, but, you know, we would most likely, if this were to pass, for instance, you would take the initial bond out to the market right away, and the likelihood of us seeing another three quarters of a point increase in the next three months is probably pretty unlikely. Just curious, you know, maybe just provide a little bit of insight and, you know, guidance there.
I'll try. Yes, so what we have been using is a ballpark of a one percent over-current market for the whole plan. Trying to balance, and I'd like to be more conservative than that, but, you know, I also want to display in the repayment plan that we are still at near historical lows for the last thirty years for financing long-term bond issues. You were correct, that in December, the Federal Reserve Board did raise its overnight lending rate, which is a very short rate. That in and of itself did not move long-term rates, and as, in fact, the first week and a half of this year, long-term rates have actually come down roughly fifteen basis points, point one-five percent, which is counterintuitive if you're thinking about rates in general, but the overnight lending rate is a very short rate. It does not impact the long-term investor as much. What they're going to be more focused on is the risk of long-term inflation. So if the message that comes from the Federal Reserve Board, if and when they do make another action this year, the message of why they're making that next step higher will be more impactful than the actual act of raising it a quarter point or a half a point. So if in that message, they're talking about stronger global economy, wage pressures, the low unemployment is forcing, you know, increased costs, that is what, those are the types of talking points that the long-term municipal bond investor is listening for, and when they think that we're going to move off of this one-to-two range and potentially be above two, which is the Federal Reserve's target, and, you know, potentially creep into two and a half, that's where they're going to say, well, with long-term rates, I can't lock up my money for long-term. Right now, the thirty-year U.S. Treasury is at a two ninety. For thirty years, the investors are still willing to give the U.S. government a loan at less than three percent. So when you take inflation out of that, the real return is going to be, you know, based on what that inflation rate is. So, to your point, though, rates are still very favorable, they've gotten a little bit better since the last time I was here. We are using a higher-than-current planning estimate that if rates did not change and we were able to lock in the financing at that one percent better, that would translate into about a million two per ten million that you issue, so, you know, if you did a hundred million, which I know you're not, but that would, for easy math, that would be twelve million dollars of interest cost that you're not going to repay. And so therefore, we can use that to pay down debt quicker, using, or lessen the tax levy over that repayment term.
Some of the other, Mr. President, if I just have one more point, I guess.
It looked like you did, so go ahead.
Just thinking, thinking, that's right. There are some other contingencies that we have in here that we're not willing to be too risky on. For instance, drain water, you know, storm water treatment. We could have some conversations with the city, you wouldn't necessarily do that until afterwards. There are some other opportunities for us to potentially tap into, whether or not that would progress into anything, I think is an unknown. So you have some of those contingencies in there, you know, from my perspective, I'd rather see us not be too aggressive and take all those contingencies for granted and assume that they're all going to happen, and then if you don't have them happen, now you're taking away from programming for our kids. You know, so I think it's great to have those opportunities for us to find additional savings at a later time, once we were to get to a point where you could actually have those conversations, but I think to do it now is maybe a bit renegade, if you will. Just some thoughts.
Mr. President?
Yes, go ahead.
So if we go to referendum and certain referendum dollars are approved, and as we work through the scope of the project and get further along, and we don't end up spending those dollars, what happens to those dollars?
Well, we just don't, we just don't sell the bonds, right? We don't go into the debt if we don't need to.
Correct. If, the way we are phasing in the financing, you will have finalized your bidding packages throughout the next two years, therefore, if you come in under, you would just not borrow that based on that authority. And the other option would be, is if you decide you want to offset some of this cost with fund balances, and again, I'm not suggesting that you do that, but if you do, as a board, want to go that route, and Brian, would it be fair to say that we would assume that fund balance contribution would be the last dollar spent, so that they would have some flexibility there as well with how much they would have to pay if we don't have to spend those dollars? Because you're going to want to lock in sooner, given some rate risk right now?
Yes, that would be a one way the board could go with the financing plan.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, Sandy.
Based upon Bruce's comments, can I assume that if you've got stuff worked into this program right now about stormwater and things the city's going to require us to do, and they're rather expensive, I'm sure, but if it turns out that the city allows us to do something that, let's say, is half as much money as you've got worked in there, we're not going to find a way to spend that then to add more space or something, are we?
No, you as a board would be making those decisions, yeah.
Sandy, Mr. President, I just wanted to address that real quick. I think what you've seen out of the district historically is tremendous fiscal restraint, and just because we can doesn't mean that we should, and I think we've demonstrated that time and time with the public, with whether it be under levy, whether it be any other type of thing, and so I understand that just by passing these resolutions today, you still would have to approve the project. If the resolution passed, you still have to approve the project, you have to approve the sale of bonds, you have to approve the design to go into construction drawings, then you have to approve the final set of drawings, then you have to approve the bid packages. So there are lots of checkpoints along the way to make sure that it's not a, well, hey, we found an extra, we found an extra two million or five million, let's add this on there, let's add that on there. So, absolutely, so what I want people to understand is, the resolutions that may be set tonight is not the end-all-be-all, there's probably four or five more approval processes should everything pass and we get to a final building.
Well, are you saying that we might, that this might come in way under what we're thinking it might be?
There are tens of thousands of decisions which will decide where it comes in on budget, so that is always an opportunity, that's always a potential.
Well, in the timeline we're talking about, because I understand that facilities and grounds, that the rough recommendation was made, did not start the RFP or RFQ, whatever the acronym you use, to get the proposals back from architects until the referendums passed. That's going to set us back a few months, and time is money, but yet it also buys us some extra insight on what's happening. We're going to get, if the referendum passes in April, and even if we did really short proposal time and interview and select the architect by the end of May, there's going to be a design process that lasts several months, six to nine months, I understand?
Or more for the high school. The high school will be an extensive design period.
So we would be into February, March of two thousand seventeen, so we would have the official count for next year's sixteen-seventeen kindergarten class, we would, for all the grades, we would know more information, we would also have the births from two thousand fifteen. We just got the birth from two thousand fourteen, and I want to point out, it's not, it's an uptick, and like you said, trends, but we did base a lot of these short-term roll-up of the grades based on an average of the last three births, which happened to be the lowest three years of births in a three-year period, going back to the nineties or earlier.
Are those birth figures from just Hudson, or where are they from?
They were the school district, entire school. These are the numbers we get from the state, from the Department of Health and Human Services, saying how many people were born in our schooled district of residents, already in our district. Which, I agree, I know where you're kind of going with that, because that doesn't necessarily translate to kindergarten kids, because people move. In fact, we found that generally, more people move into our district in that period of time than move out, with the exception, I think, of one year was two thousand nine.
And they send their kids to private schools, too.
What's that?
They send their children to private schools also.
And they send them to private schools, but for these projections, we were using an average of two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, and two thousand thirteen, and that happened to be, I think, three hundred and thirty-five, three hundred and thirty-six. Well, instead of that three hundred and thirty-three being the same for the next five years, which is what that demographer had used, it was three hundred and sixteen, three hundred and sixty-nine in two thousand fourteen. So already, and if you just take that average, that's an extra twelve students a year. You take that over five, six grades that we have in the elementary, and all of a sudden there's an extra seventy-two kids. You take it times four high school years, there's an extra forty-eight students in our high school. So it doesn't take much to be off on these projections for us to be back in the soup, if you will. I mean, reminding folks, we built this middle school that we have, it's a nice middle school right now. It's a little tight, when it was built for a capacity of eleven hundred and twenty-five, and now we're projected next year to have thirteen hundred and sixty kids in those three grades. And no matter what we do tonight, that addition is not going to be built tomorrow, still not going to be in effect until the fall of two thousand seventeen, when we're going to have even more kids in there. Now, the question, though, is, how big do you make it? In the past, when we built our junior high in sixty-three, and we built our high school in seventy-four, seventy-five, and we built the middle school, it was always built with about at least twenty percent growth expectation. And this renovation that we're doing at the high school, and addition, and addition, and then the addition at the middle school, changes that trend quite a bit, and we're trimming back. This is a compromise from the building, the whole new school, which I didn't support anymore once I saw these figures, but you got to build in the flexibility, and I think it just makes sense to do the two-story, but I would lean more towards the ten-classroom addition, being the two hundred and fifty students adding on to our capacity, get it to thirteen seventy-five, which is right in that range of where we are projected to be just in the year two thousand seventeen, when the addition would be done. I think to do much less than that doesn't make sense, but I would like to see us add the space that we add, have the flexibility. I don't want us using closets, I don't want to see us have another dozen teachers on carts, and that's the way we're going to do our future planning. By the same token, when you see what's happening with the projected enrollment dropping, depending on which model you look at, a couple hundred students, you know, I don't want to see us have whole houses empty either in five years. Now, there is stuff we could do with space, whether it's excess, considered excess space at the elementary, or at the middle school. We've got IT right now is renting space, we could find space in the schools for them. And the administration, we have a whole building that we bought, that if there were projected long-term empty classrooms, we'd be able to convert and get the administration back in, which is where it was up until, what, two thousand five or two thousand seven, we moved the administration out of the high school.
Yeah, I believe that's correct. You know, a lot of times people have talked about the admin office going into the high school, because that was the original plan when we were looking at an eight, nine building and having the space, but there would be nothing that would preclude us from moving that into the middle school, should there become excessive capacity at the middle school, or moving different departments into different places in the building. We do lease space for our IT department in the building next door to the administrative offices, and then we own the building that we are currently in.
Mr. President?
Yes.
One quick question. I thought I heard this in one of our, maybe it was facilities and grounds, but we talked about programming, right? And the trend lately, or at least the last couple of years, has been an increase in special needs? So did you talk about, like, even a couple of classrooms in the high school right now that are needing to be repurposed for special needs, and that takes that twenty-five average per classroom right down to fifteen? Did I hear that right?
Yeah, so, and Tony can elaborate if we need him to, but essentially what's happened over the last five years, our special ed population's grown on average seven percent a year, is that correct, Kevin? And so when that grows, what ends up happening is we end up with spaces for regular education that would typically be a math classroom, or social studies, or English classroom, now it needs to be converted to some other alternative space, and when you're doing that, then you're no longer able to utilize that space for regular ed. So you could technically say a building that has built capacity of sixteen eighty, as the program changes in the building, as the needs change of students, the actual capacity of that building can go down, as far as the classroom capacity of the building, and we're seeing, I think, next year, when I talk to PEG, we will be pulling another regular ed teacher out of a classroom next year in order to convert that to a special ed classroom at the high school. We don't see that trend lighting up anytime soon, because our kids are coming to us with more and more needs. You heard the Strive Program as well, looking for additional space. Again, it just, it changes the capacity, and that's when Matt said, you know, what's the capacity of the building? Somewhat tongue-in-cheek, say, you tell me the program, and I'll tell you the capacity, because depending on the makeup of our building is going to drastically change what the capacity is.
All right. I just thought I'd heard that. And we try, I mean, obviously, the special needs program in our elementary schools well-recognized, let's say, you know, and we do a lot of great work there. I think it attracts folks at times into our community for those needs, so, you know, I'm sure we can look back down, not that we need to do a large analysis on it, but, you know, we could probably plan that stuff out pretty far in advance.
All right. Well, we've been talking a lot about the middle school and the high school and the academic part of this. What about the extracurricular? We have, you know, proposals. We had a survey in which the community was close to supporting the auditorium renovation, but overall did not with all of the athletics, you know, in the ten million range, and so what we have in the package is alternatives of different combinations of ball fields, stadiums, the multipurpose stadium with the auditorium, could be done separately, together, and I want to hear some discussion on that and what some thoughts are, especially what came out of facilities and grounds.
Yeah, I was just going to make- Yeah, I was just going to make a couple comments, you guys can add on to it, but I think the general consensus coming out of Facilities and Grounds was to not go forward with every single option in the, would have been the athletics. So, the discussion was to look at pulling out those things besides the multipurpose stadium and tennis court lights, that was at least what we kind of felt was appropriate. And also, to look at the auditorium. We talked about kind of combining those two questions together to start splitting them up, seems to be inappropriate, you almost create in athletics versus in arts, and we don't really want to create that type, but we didn't feel that was a good position to put the community in. So, that was kind of general consensus, you know, but break it out as a separate question, certainly to ensure that the options are provided to the community. If that's not something the community wants to support at this point in time, let's give them that question and option to vote on. And if they want to support it, again, that option is there to vote. Rob, Sandy, any additional comments from?
I would just make a comment that I did have someone approach me about the auditorium. I mean, we're trying to do what's right for the community that we think people will approve of, but this party made a really good point, in that the auditorium is really part of the high school, and is used by lots of kids in the school, student body, and for a lot of things, versus the athletics, which is not necessarily part of the interior structure of the high school. So, the suggestion was made that the auditorium dollars be left in the high school, and have the athletic question as a question of its own. And I'm just relaying that to you, that someone mentioned that to me, I don't know what your thoughts are about it, but it was a suggestion.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I had some folks come talk to me about that, too, and I think, once I explained the context, that it was better understood, because I think that particular individual that, at least I spoke with at the time, had the impression that we were going to not address the auditorium at all. In reality, we are addressing the auditorium from an infrastructure perspective, in terms of what you would do at the appropriate time. What is pulled out in terms of the 2.460200 is inside the box, so to speak, right? You know, you've got your lighting, your seating, your sound, et cetera, that would be really the separate question, that would be out there. All of that infrastructure that should take place at the time of the renovation is actually built-in functionally to the remodel for the high school. Am I saying that right?
Yes, fire protection, HVAC, fire alarm, and general lighting are included in the base project for the auditorium.
Yeah, so that at least helped the context for the person that had asked me, it could have been completely different context than what that individual had asked of Sandy, but, you know, I think at least that individual that had asked me the question felt more comfortable that that was being addressed at that point in time. That's just one perspective, though.
Rob?
Thanks. You know, in some of the conversations that I've had, you know, around the auditorium specifically, it's in desperate need of some updates, it's a real community engagement, if you will, asset that we have. But when I have conversations around this, candidly, this multipurpose stadium, it's not just, it's not just football, it's not just track, varsity track, varsity football, varsity soccer, it's, it's an opportunity for our community to have access to additional space that we don't have today, and I liken it back to what we saw at Minnetoka and their fields. It's just not necessarily, I think, for the high school, it's for our community. And so, to be able to have that kind of asset available to our public does so much more than just having a conversation on varsity sports. Culturally, as we talk about branding and other things, it does so much more for us. So, personally, I'm supportive of combining the multipurpose stadium and the auditorium.
Can I ask a question on the numbers? And I don't know if we have these available today, but we've seen a number of presentations for, and I know we probably don't track it at the middle school, I'm sure we do from an arts perspective, choir, band, orchestra, et cetera, but there's over 1,100 kids participating in sports today, too, so, I mean, the numbers are pretty high for both, I wouldn't say that one necessarily is way more extravagant than the other, because band and choir, orchestra, they are electives, right? So, just like sports are...
So, just kind of a point of clarity, a couple things. Both of these two pieces are very community-driven, because the community uses probably those two pieces the most, the auditorium and the multipurpose stadium. The multipurpose stadium, you have to think of it not just as athletic space for extracurriculars, but also additional PE space during the day, because our kids are outside and they can use that. Think of it as space for the marching band to practice, instead of doing that in the parking lot, for little kids' leagues to be able to utilize the facility on the weekends. Currently, Newton Field, we play four or five home games there a year, a couple track meets there a year, otherwise, that stadium, for the most part of the field, sits empty the majority of the year, maybe 10, 12 events a year in that venue. One of the things, and we learned this on the tour with Minnetoka, is, you know, by adding that turf into the stadium, it's not for the football team, or the soccer team, because they already have really nice places to play, it's for everybody else, it is for upgrading that community use, it's for the PE use, it's for the, all the other, you know, groups that currently don't have access to those facilities. Not that I'm advocating that you put those in the base project or anything like that, but I just want to make sure people understand that those are two components that are very community-oriented, as far as being able to get the public, which are paying for this, should they vote for it, to be able to utilize those facilities even more as well.
Just playing out that hypothetical, then, if we were to do a question with, that had the auditorium and a multipurpose stadium, that would be roughly about, what, 8.3, 8.4 million? 8.23? All right, thank you, 8.23. All right, let's say the academic part of this passes, and, you know, it doesn't pass on the extracurriculars. We've already said that, you know, Plan B is going to be on, any question that doesn't pass, we're going to do some type of exit interview, find out what it was, and then tweak it. If it ends up, hypothetically, again, where the people are going maybe price-tag-wise, and they see the auditorium being only 2.4 versus the 5.95 for the multipurpose stadium, you're talking about phasing in the renovation after we do the addition, maybe a little part simultaneously, but we could do the auditorium renovation two years into the project, we'd have plenty of time to come back with another referendum, if it was something that the majority of the community would support, would be to do these upgrades to the auditorium before we get to the infrastructure renovation of the auditorium, we could still do that in that timing.
It would be no different than the community press guy, where they passed the base high school question, and actually came back with a referendum the following year, and passed an auditorium addition at that point. Those are being constructed simultaneously, so, yours is even cleaner, because it's renovation. So, really, anytime you would want to come back and tackle that renovation, you'd be able to do that.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I guess where I'm at on this, and I've given it a lot of thought, is that I think these four things, these four items, high school, middle school, auditorium, and the multipurpose stadium, have to be part of an ensemble, I'm going to use that word. You don't go to Nordstrom's and, you know, buy the pants, and go to Sears and buy the shirt, and go to Macy's and buy, you know, another part of your wardrobe. I really think that we're going to really miss with this community if we don't include them all in one referendum, with lots of information going out to the community, to be very clear about the costing. Now, I can substantiate my opinion with numbers, because in the survey, with, between the taxpayer resident and the parents, remember, the parents was like 51%, and just taxpayer resident without kids were 49%? And as far as, on the scale of one to three, when it came to athletics, for example, 1.96 of all the residents wanted to have a stadium, and with the parents, it was like between, I don't know why I have two numbers here, we'll say, I'll take the lower one, 2.11. And then, as far as upgrading dressing rooms and everything for the auditorium, it was 1.86. You can see how close that, that's closer to two than it is to one, and then, the parents, of course, were a two on that one-to-three scale that was used. So, I think, I think that there's strong, I mean, you know, I'm not a numbers person, as Tim's been my mentor and all this, but it seems to me that that's a strong indication that the community feels strongly about the auditorium, and, you know, and I feel good about the sports as this integral element to youth education. But also, Rob, you used a word that really resonated with me, and that was the word "community," maybe Dr. Oles said that, too, but I think the community loves to come out and gather, and needs a gathering place, and there's so many things that, that safe environment of the multipurpose stadium would be good for, like the marching band, and the, you know, leagues in the summer, and so on. So, I really would like to, and I'll just give you my opinion upfront, I'm looking for a referendum, I want to go into the booth, take, you know, a minute to read it, and go yea or nay, and not go, hmm, and then have to go to two, and then have to go to three, and read individual piecemeal cafeteria-style referendum, ensemble.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Am I clear, Sue, that what you're saying is, you want one question for 94 million on the referendum? You don't want to split anything out? Okay, thank you.
Yes, one whole outfit.
Mr. President?
Yes, Carrie.
Hey, can I comment?
Yes.
I would like to disagree, I do like the ensemble reference, but listening to the community survey results, I think it was Sue that gave us those results, what the voters would support sounded like certainly the renovation and additions, possibly an auditorium, not the athletics. In the numbers that were just there, if we have three separate questions, it looks like, should the auditorium and stadium not pass, we would have the discretion potentially to use the 3.5 million to either do the auditorium, or part of the stadium, at least get the, part of the turf in place. I don't know if that's something we want to consider, but I do want to respect the community input that we've had that took months to compile, and then culminating in survey, that looked like that would be the areas that they would support.
So, are you saying two questions, high school, middle school, and then?
High school and middle school would be one question, auditorium is second, and sports the third. And not a total package on the sports, because that was, I think, pretty clear, that they didn't want that, but at least having the multi-stadium as a question.
All right, well, Carrie, I appreciate you getting that out there, because I was waiting for somebody to kind of, I think that we could come at this from different angles, so I'm anxious to hear what other folks think about number of questions and how it would be proposed, because I want to get that discussion going before we have a formal motion, because it'd get way too hard if we do a motion first and then start amending it. So, go ahead, Bruce.
Mr. President? Sandy, do you want to? Are you sure? I'm going to yet throw out another alternative, and I'm going to take the perspective of our Facilities and Grounds discussion, which I thought was one of compromise and good discussion, but it was really to look at three questions. And personally, I was opposed to this at our last meeting, if you guys recall, I did not like it, because I thought, you know, what happens if the middle school gets passed and the high school doesn't? You know, now we're sitting there in a bad spot. We talked about the potential to build the referendum as such, where you could ask the question for the high school and the middle school separately, so that'd be two questions, and then you combine the auditorium and the fields, and again, building upon what we've done throughout the entire PST process, and giving the community the opportunity to voice their opinion and their choices, and they would do that through these separate questions. You could build it as such, and we did get some general guidance, I would say, not 100% confirmation, that you could build a referendum to state that the second two questions, the middle school and the auditorium and the, I'll just use the word stadium, would pass unless the high school first question did pass. And a lot of that came from a point of compromise, it just did. A lot of that discussion around the three points came from a place of compromise, because I think that as a board, we want to try and get to a point where we can all support this, at least in principle, for what we're trying to accomplish here, and to give our community the opportunity to voice their opinion. So, that is kind of where we ended with Facilities and Grounds, was to look at the three-question option. I felt it was a good discussion as a group, and I do think that it allows us to get started on this. I think, I agree with Carrie on the survey, that it wouldn't be prudent for us to go with a single question, and I don't think it's that far of a stretch for us as a board to consider bringing these forward in a way that, one, we can educate the community through communications, we can provide all of the detail around each of the three options, and then let the community speak.
What's that?
Mr. President?
Right, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Sue, just with Bruce, what he just talked about, the recommendation coming out of Facilities and Grounds, I think VON Council may be prepared to talk about that.
If I understood your point, you would have three questions, one for the high school, one for the middle school, and then one that combined the auditorium and athletic facilities, but in some way connecting approval of the first question on the high school to going forward with the other two? Let me just make the point, the questions that are presented to the electors for approval have to stand on their own, you can't connect one question to the other. When the, if you take those three questions to referendum, and what happens at the referendum, essentially what happens if these questions are approved, it gives the board the authority, then, to proceed and borrow the funds for those projects. So, if you had a situation where the first question, the high school question failed, and the other two passed, that doesn't require the board to proceed with those projects.
Okay, so, I understand, we still would have our discretion to be able to basically state, you know, listen, from a community perspective, this isn't something that the board supports, is just to do these two lesser options and not address our needs at high school, but that would be our decision and our discretion, not something we would put in a question.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Sandy.
Am I to understand that our educating the public, in educating the public about how this is going to work, we can state that?
Oh, sure. Exactly, yeah.
Sue, did you have a point you wanted to make?
Yeah, I always forget what I was going to say. No, I, I remember on one of the survey results...
No, I, I remember on one of the survey results, it was that, I think it was, I think it was the question about whether you would support a referendum, I believe it was, that one with some horizontal lines. And again, the people that were, I can't remember, but anyway, it was a huge number of parents who, it was in the group of parents, I believe. Anyway, they, most of the parents had kids in middle school and high school that would be wanting to support a referendum. And so I just cannot get away from seeing the high school and the middle school as one question to meet, you know, the educational needs that we, you know, outlined back in August in terms of space solution. And I think we would be shooting our, however that line goes, shooting a hole in our foot.
Shooting ourselves in the foot.
There you go. I'm like George Bush, I guess, I can't remember how they go.
Strategic.
But anyway, yeah, I only know art, I don't know this other stuff. But anyway, I just think we'd be shooting ourself in the foot if we divide up the high school and the middle school. I really feel very strongly about that.
Mr. President?
Bruce.
Yeah, I felt that way as well in our last meeting, and even all the way up until our facilities and grounds meeting. Felt it was a really good discussion. I have had some additional conversations with people in the community. I think there are some folks, not all folks, but there are some folks that feel it's more prudent for us to potentially look at utilizing more of the space at Prairie. And I'm not saying that that's an option that I support, but there are people in the community that have that feeling. And there are others, and I spend a lot of time, it's funny, we talk about the circles that we go in, the life stage, if you will, that we're at. You know, I'm around a lot of parents with kids that have their kids in the school district, and they want to see this done, they want to see, you know, us move forward on this. But I also recognize there are others in the community that maybe don't feel that the middle school's necessary. I think the survey told us that the middle school was as important as the high school. What I'm suggesting here, and what I think we found was a good compromise in facilities and grounds, and please speak up, guys, I feel like I'm the only one talking about our meeting, was that this does give the public the opportunity to vote on all options. It gives them to get their voice heard, it's not taking anything away, but it is breaking it out and giving the choice, just as we have done throughout the entire engagement process. And I think it's a fair compromise, and I think the community will speak on those options that are and would be available as part of the questions.
Mr. President?
Lynn.
I like that you're not breaking apart or dividing the community around auditorium and stadium. I like that you're combining that. I want to hear more from Rob and Sandy on kind of what you're hearing or what you brought to the committee meeting when you discussed it a little bit more. I'm, I kind of feel like, Sue, I'm worried that if you're splitting up those two options that we're not addressing all of the educational needs of our students, and that's what we're charged to do, and that we're maybe dividing the community around, well, you only care about the high school, or you only care about the middle school. So I just, I want to hear a little bit more about your discussions around that.
Where, I'll go first. You know, the conversation we had during facilities, you know, I thought it started out very black and white, if you will, as far as beliefs in either, you know, middle school, high school, or split. And through our conversation, and really where they got to was, it got back to the survey. You know, in listening to the folks in the community, and as Sue pointed out, there was strong passion, if you will, for the high school, there was passion for the middle school. But then there's also the community perception around dollar size. And so if we give the community the opportunity to drill into each individual issue and make a decision on the high school and then the middle school, it provides comfort for our community to make the yes decision versus packaging all one. It makes it potentially a little more cumbersome to make that yes vote, is what I got out of our conversation during the facilities.
Do you have anything to add, Sandy? Just give you that opportunity.
I'm smiling. I do. At the facilities meeting, Rob and Bruce both came with the idea that Sue has about putting the high school and the middle school together. I was the one that suggested maybe splitting them up to get the dollars more manageable for the public. I believe that they went along with my suggestion in the hopes that that would be a compromise for me and them and the board, and that I may be able to get behind this project and support it and vote yes. Am I, am I correct that that was, that was what we were trying to accomplish?
You know, Mr. President?
Yes, go ahead, Bruce.
Yeah, I would say that that was part of it. It was also in the discussion that you had brought up around compromise, and the fact that previously the board had been positioned for a different location, a full new building, so that the plan was to support at least the location, the renovation of our existing school. So, you know, there was a compromise there and a move from space. So I would say also, though, that I have had additional conversations in the community, and I think that there are people in the community that additionally support that type of mentality. And again, it brings options to our, to our community members.
Yeah, and I'd agree with that. You know, and I think additionally, it's, of course, we're looking for a seven-oval, that's, you know, what we're looking for. But I think pointedly, it's, where's the community at? What's going to help the community make a yes decision? And Sandy brought up some good points with some of the folks she brought up during our conversation. You know, Bruce has talked to other people that, as he just mentioned, support splitting, you know, as have I. At the end of the day, we don't want the lipstick on the pig. You know, we want to do the right thing for the community, model it after Minnetonka, or model it after a vision for our own school district. We're, we're just after getting something done.
Oh, Mr. President?
Yes, Sue.
I, I think the community is going to be royally disappointed with us not being a responsible school board. If we break this thing up into little pieces, this is not about an order, this is about a full-meal deal that the community wants. And my interpretation of the survey results, well explained by Sue, was that formerly known as option three, formerly known as option nine, now called the project, was all about, was all about the high school and the middle school, and we already determined tonight that there was lesser emphasis on auditorium and certainly even lesser emphasis on a multipurpose stadium. But the idea of being responsible for the educational needs of our students, whose space is already being critically compromised, 13 people on carts, and, and I don't know how the principal feels at Prairie Elementary, that we're just deciding that we're going to keep using the space and compromising their efforts for elementary education. I just think it's the worst idea, I shouldn't say worse, because I respect you as colleagues, but I think it would be a very, I don't think it would accomplish the idea of what we're trying to do here in terms of educational space, to not keep middle school and high school together. I really, I feel very strongly about that. So I just want to make my position clear.
Mr. President? Just quick.
Yes, Rob.
You know, I think the questions that we're talking about tonight are just, one very important piece, but a small piece in the overall conversation and communication that needs to happen with the community. So regardless of what comes out of this, question-wise, there's a lot of work to be done communicating the need and reinforcing everything that's been discussed over the last several months. And if, and if the job is done right, whether it's one question, two questions, three questions, the results should be positive.
I guess it's time for me to say something here on this, and I want to, I can understand where Sue was coming from, but I'm going to respectfully disagree that we should do it in all in one question, get back to the survey again. Now, with the survey, we didn't happen to separate out the middle school and the high school. But they are different buildings, there are different programs, and I want to try and preserve the house concept. I have optimism that this is going to pass because of the long community engagement process we've engaged in. But I was optimistic more than a year ago when we did the last referendum, and kind of got sat back in our chairs, and we got, and we cannot afford to do that again. We cannot afford to put up a mega referendum on a single question and risk having it get defeated. We have to make this work. And if we have to make it work by segmenting it out so that it's easier to swallow, instead of taking the one big forkful all at once, and people understand it, yes, there is a risk there, that we could, the high school could pass and the middle school wouldn't. But especially when you look at the impact on the dollars, now my support for separating them out would depend on whether we can get consensus on how we apply the 3.5 million we have in the capital fund. And what I would propose is that we look at, to me, one way of looking at it and segmenting it out was proposed by an audience member, a member of our public, about separating out the renovation separate from the addition. I'm not in favor of that, but it would be a further way of getting it across. I think that we need to have one cohesively designed high school that's adequately sized, not just adequately, that's fully sized to fit the programs that we have and going into the 21st century. We have no space for collaboration now. We want to roll out three or four more academies, and we can't, because we don't have the space for it. We are undersized in our core areas. We need more gym space. And these things are definite needs. And I think we focus on the high school, and the addition happens to be roughly 26 and some million dollars, so, right, 26.7, whatever it is, after you figure in all the soft costs. The hard cost, it was around that 22, 24, when you're looking at the per square foot. So what I would propose is you look at the 20, roughly 27 million addition cost at the high school, and you look at the 8.7 that's being proposed at the middle school, and divide it out as 2.7 of the 3.5 apply it to the high school, so that the first question would be asking for, doing my math, 76.9 minus 2.7, roughly 74.2. Did I get that right? Okay. I guess I should be looking at Tim Erickson. All right. And then the, at the high, at the middle school, that would be then asking for bonding of 7.9 million. And I think that that's a reasonable way of separating it out based on what we're adding to each of the buildings on a cost basis. And it makes those projects, I think, more manageable for people's budgets by applying the capital fund. So I think it should be applied, you have to apply it in some manner. And since the extracurriculars did not get the support of the community for the survey, I would not apply any of the capital fund to that question, but yet put forward a reduced question, maybe just the multipurpose stadium and the auditorium, and let that stand on its own and see what kind of support. I would hope that it could pass, because I think it's a start of what a lot of people in the community want to see, is one cohesive high school. But rather than trying to do it all at once with a snap of the finger for 11 million dollars, I think it's better to start somewhere, and because we can use, and when I say "we," the school district and the community can use a multipurpose stadium in so many ways, I think it makes sense putting on this referendum as a separate question with the auditorium.
Mr. President?
Yes.
As far as the, and I appreciate you bringing up the 3.5, I would respectfully disagree with putting, you know, all of it against the referendum ask. It's, we have a high school project that is unique in that even with the addition...
I'm sorry, was what, I didn't hear.
The high school?
Yeah.
Two-thirds of that project, roughly, is, and it's unique in that two-thirds of it's retrofit. Tear it down, rebuild it, the 5% potentially, 6% contingency, you know, I would argue is light for that type of work. If it were greenfield construction, it'd be different. We're fortunate in that we have 3.5 million dollars set aside for secondary space. What I would suggest is leaving some flexibility in how we spend those dollars, whether it's a portion of it, all of it later, if we decide to buy down the project, we don't have to sell the bonds. Furthermore, we have six elementary schools, we've been talking about a 10-year deferred maintenance plan. We have six elementary schools that are in varying need of some love, and I can give you an example, at Rock, we have steam boilers that are over 50 years old that need some attention. We have 3.5 million dollars to do some pretty good things, but we can be smart with how we reinvest those dollars. I don't think necessarily at this point we should just jump to buying down the project, is my very humble opinion.
All right. Here's why I disagree with you, Rob. I analogize it to your house, all right, and your home, and you're going to remodel your house, all right, and you're sitting there with, instead of 3.5 million, let's say 3.5,000 in the bank. And I liken the referendum to going to the bank for approval for your loan, okay? It's not actually taking borrowing the money yet, because we haven't designed the project, we haven't costed it out with the bid process and so forth, but it's getting the approval. And by increasing the amount that you're going to the community, in this case for the referendum, it's like increasing the amount you're going to the bank for, you're risking not getting the approval of the bank by inflating what you're asking for. I would say, apply the money that's in your savings before you go into debt further. I mean, nobody takes out a 10% loan if you've got money sitting in the bank, all right? Now here, thankfully, we're not doing 10% bonds, but I think anywhere where we can save the taxpayers, we should do it. The alternative would be to cut the project back then to the lower end of the scale, the 72 million, and then say, we're not going to apply the fund, and we'll just make it work later in the bid process. I'm not in favor of that, because I think that's disingenuous, potentially misleading. I think that we're trying to put forward a project here that may end up not being what we do in the end, but it's pretty darn close. I want to see enough in there that gives us some flexibility, but I don't, you're talking about not applying 3.5 million on top of a $4 million contingency for this high school, that's 7.5 million dollars of just extra money, and I just think that we're better off going to the community a little closer to the vest.
So if I may build upon your analogy?
Sure.
In lieu of it being a 3.500, you know, savings account, I'd change it a little bit and say, you know, you're the owner of investment property portfolio, you have an apartment building, you've got six duplexes, and you've got a, you know, maybe a fourplex or something like that. You're looking at, because of the business financials you've run, you believe that if you put a small addition on your apartment building and make some modifications, ultimately your cash flow will be better for your corporation. What I'm suggesting is, with the 3.5 million dollars we have, because you're renovating that apartment building, likely you're going to run into circumstances that you simply can't predict. You can't. And I would suggest that the contingency we have set aside, if we take the 3.5 and just plan on buying down the debt, that goes away. And then we run the risk of potentially not completely following through with our promises to our taxpayers. And then on top of that, if you have the boilers at Rock, if they fail, emergency replacement is going to cost our district 20 to 30% more than a planned replacement. And so we've got a lot of moving parts going on, that 3.5 million dollars can do a lot of neat things. And I'm not saying yes or no as far as spending... And I'm not saying yes or no as far as spend or not, but we can use part of it to buy, buy it down and then decide to maybe not buy bonds later if we don't need to.
Right. Well, now you're segueing into a whole agenda item that's, you know, separate, and that is future budgeting, because I think we should be, we're underloving by 13 million dollars. I think we should be planning to spend more on capital projects and building a capital fund in the future, but if you have the capital fund and you're going to referendum, I think you use it, you don't put it on, as a contingency on top of another contingency.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I get where Rob's coming from. I, I think, you know, even dating back to the last referendum and throughout the entire community engagement process, and we've talked about this dollar figure being there for secondary space, I think to not apply it to secondary space and use it as a rainy day fund would not be what we've communicated to the public thus far. So I, I too feel it should be applied here to the referendum question because those are funds that have been set aside for the secondary space, and it, at least from my understanding, has always been with the intent that we were going to use it towards something that we were doing to put us in a better position for our secondary space.
I have another mix here. Would it be possible, would you consider, would you consider at least putting the auditorium in with the high school? And if, if all, if the high school, the middle school, and the auditorium all went together, came through, if it was approved by the community, it still puts us a little over 84 million, and we were banding around the number 86 million in the, in the survey. And we had discussion earlier, Rob commented too, about how integral the arts, in this case, the, the theater and music and so on, is to student education, and I believe at one of our board meetings not too long ago, we, we had the choir people and people in the music and instrumental area come up and share with us their accomplishments. So I, I would like to suggest the idea of the auditorium being in with the high school and, and, you know, that would still fit in with the suggestion of three referenda.
Mr. President? Yeah?
Just talking about Sue's question or comment, I guess I don't want to make the decision for the community to pick an auditorium over athletics. I think that's a decision we let them pick. I mean, I think if you're putting it in there, you're saying that as a district, we are making an auditorium a priority, and that's, I don't feel like that's our decision to make. I feel like it's the community's decision.
Mr. President?
Yes, Sandy.
Obviously, there's some, people on this board have varying ideas about how this should be structured. Would it be wise for us to postpone this decision until the 25th when we have a meeting scheduled so that everybody has a chance to gather more information, review it in their head, decide what they can get behind, or do we need to go forward tonight? Just asking the question.
Well...
Mr. President?
Yes, Bruce.
It's kinda like the, the raises were for the support staff, and I hate to bring that one up, but we kinda talked and talked and talked and, you know, nothing really changed from that meeting to the next meeting, and I, I know you asked the question that time, what's really gonna change for us, you know, the numbers are what they are, you know? Yes, we do have a lot of different variant points, but I think we can continue to talk through this at least a little bit. I, yes, there might be some more information that people can, can talk through, but I would like to make sure that we have everything out on the table personally from each of the individuals, and so we just understand where we're at as a board.
On the notion about postponing, I mean, I know we have bond counsel here, and I'm sorry, where are you from? What city? All right, so we have bond counsel from Milwaukee, and we have Brian Brewer who's from Milwaukee, and we're gonna ask them to come up again on January 25th. I don't think that that would be a good idea. I think we can continue to wa, talk through this and, and get to a point where we can make a motion, we can make multiple motions. And that's one of my questions to bond counsel. Do we have, do we do this as a master motion that would separate three questions, or is it better to do one motion per question?
Yeah, I think, actually, I, I think you, you approach it at two levels, and I think what you're doing right now is the first level, trying to come to some consensus about the number of questions and what is in each question. And if you come to consensus on that, then I think you can bring the resolutions that are in the packet through motion for approval and, and, you know, match those resolutions to, you know, the options that the, the board has reached consensus on. So I think it's sort of a two-level process.
I already winked this up.
And I think you're at the first level right now, trying to figure out how many questions you're going to present at the referendum and what each one of those questions is going to cover. And once you do that, then I think we can go to the initial resolution options that are in your packet and match those up against what you decide there.
Mr. President? So three of the board members have been able to discuss at a committee level and come to a consensus on a question. Can the rest of us weigh in on whether or not we could get there as a board?
Please.
When, Mr. President?
Yes.
Just to clarify, three of the committees came to consensus on three questions.
That's correct.
Okay.
If I didn't say that correctly, I...
Yeah.
That's what I meant.
At least being asked as three questions.
I'm sorry, three committees or three members?
Three members from one committee, three questions.
Can you review what that is so that we can weigh in on that?
Happy to.
Thank you.
The three questions were high school, middle school, and a combined multipurpose stadium and tennis court lights and auditorium.
May I ask a question?
Yes, am I stating that right, Sandy and Rob?
I thought, I thought we were going to exclude the tennis court lights.
That might be the discrepancy, the 8.4 that's up on the board and the 8.2 somebody said, so I think it was 200,000 for tennis court lights.
So, third question would be stadium and auditorium.
May I ask a question of the committee?
Mr. President, I would say that's just fine.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Just state your question.
All right. My question is, do the people on the committee that wanna have the three questions, do you all want a referendum to pass?
Yes.
Mr. President, I absolutely want a referendum to pass. And I want us to do something. So to me, if the community can get behind the high school and for some reason the middle school doesn't pass, and the, the stadium and auditorium doesn't pass, at least we've got a roadmap and we're getting something done. You do potentially run the risk of us pushing too hard and too far when you start to combine all this stuff, and I, I feel that it would be amazing if the community would get behind one of these. If they could get behind two, great. If they wanna get behind all three, that's the community's choice. But I absolutely want this to pass, and if we can get a part of this done, i.e. the high school, in my mind, I consider that a real positive step forward for this community.
And I guess I wasn't at the committee meeting, I intended to be, but had a personal situation that prevented that, although I would've loved to have been there because I thought it was, sounded like some good discussion. I guess the other reason not to put this all in one, we also had a question on tax tolerance in the survey, and it was, you know, 85 million. Again, it wasn't down to the 10th of a million or anything, and I think by combining them all and sending this over 90 million, you're running contrary to that. And so, especially when extracurriculars didn't have the support as the academic, clearly a lower priority than either the middle school or the high school. And I think separate questions, even at the combined amount of 82.1 million, we're right in the middle of the range where we told the community we would be with this, 79 to 86.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I have, I have given this deep thoughtful consideration because I know that, I, I have been receiving a fair amount of pressure to get behind this referendum. Being told, I was been, I've been told by a number of people in the last month that if even one board member says no to a referendum, his chances of passing diminish greatly. I believe the figure I was told that it would about a 10% chance of passing if one board member of a committee is, or a board is against it, and a 50% or more chance of it passing if all board members are on the same page. I can't even express to you how much pressure that has put on me. I have had sleepless nights over this because I would suspect that of all these board members, if anybody is gonna vote no, it's gonna be me. And that has nothing to do with the need that I see because I believe the need at the high school is huge. I am so concerned about this money. I am talking to people in this community that are telling me they will not vote for this kind of money. Now, I have, I have made a decision about this, and I have given, I've written a statement here that I wanna read because I wanted to be sure that I got in everything that I needed to say about this. I believe now would be the time that I should read this rather than after a motion is made and during the discussion period, because this, my decision about what I'm gonna do with this might help the other board members in how they're going to structure this. So with your permission, I would like to read my statement if I may.
Please do.
Since I've been serving the public as a member of this board, I have always advocated for keeping the high school in its current location and remodeling it. I am very pleased that that decision has been made because it is the right thing for this community, in my opinion. I have a clear understanding of the work that needs to be done at the high school. I have been in the building on a number of occasions, and I have thoroughly studied the engineers' reports regarding updating infrastructure components of the building. I understand the need for an addition to enclose the east and west wings and provide more classrooms. I desperately want the high school to be fixed, so it's very difficult for me to say no to this proposal, to this referendum. At the same time, I believe it is necessary to prioritize our wants and needs because we cannot afford everything we desire. I cannot support a $94 million referendum because I believe this would be a significant hardship on many district taxpayers, and my other great concern is that that kind of money simply will not pass. Therein lies my dilemma. I have been told that a referendum has a better chance of passing if all board members are in support of it. I don't know whether that's true or not. I don't have any statistics to back that up, but that's what I'm being told. I'd like to be able to say yes to improving the education experience for our students and teachers. I believe my no vote would be misunderstood by voters because they would assume I do not want improvements done at the high school or the middle school, but that's not what I'm saying. I am not willing to say no to this proposal because my no vote might destroy what needs to be done at the high school, and we need to work. We need the work done on that high school. However, I cannot approve of a $94 million expenditure to solve these problems. The $94 million proposal is not much less than last year's November failed referendum amount. It's not much less. The November voters spoke very, very clearly last year defeating that proposal, 8,088 no votes to 5,744 yes votes. I am very fearful that proposing this year's referendum at $94 million is not enough of a drop from last year's dollar amount to gain the support necessary to pass it. I have had taxpayers in my group contacting me regarding the concern they have for what a $94 million expenditure will look like on their property taxes. They're concerned about how much their real estate taxes are going to increase. $94 million on a referendum question at this time is a proposal I cannot vote yes for because I believe it may be defeated, and I don't want this defeated. So that puts me in a really unenviable, not very good position of not wanting to say no, but deciding I cannot say yes. So I have determined on this question that I will be abstaining from voting on this issue, and I will wait for the voters to decide in April which direction they want us to pursue. So there will be no, no vote from me. I will be abstaining and not voting on this issue for the reasons I just stated. That might make the decision of how you wanna structure this more palatable to all of you if I've taken that off the table for you.
Oh, Mr. President?
Yes, Sue.
I just wanna tell, say to Sandy something that I've very much admired about you. I've only worked with you, whatever it's been, about eight months or so.
Yeah, not long.
Not long. But one of the things I've admired at some of the committee meetings that we've shared and maybe even board meetings is you've often said, like to Tim or whoever you're addressing, you say something along the lines of, thank you for that data or that information because it really helps explain things to me, and now I feel like I can make a decision that is mine because you've provided me, you've even used that word, you've provided me with what I, I need to know so that I can better understand. And so I just would appeal to your suggestion of abstention here because I, I think you probably know what you really want, and, and I do admire that you are a soul searcher and you go through the numbers, and I thank you for that.
Mr. President?
Yes, Bruce.
Thank you, Sandy. Appreciate that. Can I ask for a little more clarity there? Because I totally respect your position, one. Two, the $94 million is a total all encompassing and package. Do you feel the public would be better served, and would you be more supportive, take away the dollar figure, of the three questions for a high school, a middle school, and the auditorium and stadium in terms of having three separate questions to break those numbers out instead of a full package of one price?
From what I have been hearing this last two weeks, the phone calls, emails, and contacts I have received, I believe that the 76 to 78 million for the high school will not pass in the group of people that I am in touch with. That is my concern. I want the high school fixed. I don't want this going down again, but I am so concerned about these dollars and the defeat of this referendum, and I know that you and Rob and probably the rest of you are hearing from different people than I'm hearing from because, I mean, let's face it, we run in different generations. The people that I'm hearing from constitute a very large portion of the voters in this district. Of the 14,000 some voters that voted last year, I calculated about 10,000 of those people. The 14,000 somebody, number that voted in the November last year referendum, about 10,000 of those people have no connection to the school district according to the, the figures that I've seen about the percentage of voters in the district that are not connected to the district in any way, meaning... that are not connected to the district in any way, meaning they have no children, no grandchildren, they don't work for the district in any way. So if you take those ten thousand people, many of them did not respond to this survey. They are not involved in the survey process, and that is what's concerning for me. They have not responded. When I've asked them, "Why haven't you responded? Why didn't you participate?" I have simply been told, "I will participate when the referendum comes and then I'll decide and I'm probably going to vote no if it's more money than I think I want to spend." That's what I'm hearing. That's why I'm scared of these dollar amounts. And the last thing I want to do is be a no vote that sinks this. I want the public out there to decide what they want to do. And the only way to do that is for me not to vote because I can't vote no because it'll sink it. That's what you've all been, some of you have been telling me. And I can't vote yes because of the dollars.
Sandy, um, I just, just a question. How many of the people that said that they would probably vote no, I mean, is there a dollar amount that would move your vote from an abstain to a yes?
Yes, I've asked them that. I start out, I start out, "Well, tell me the dollar amount. Tell me where." I start out with fifty million. They say, "Oh, yeah, we'd vote for that." Then I say, "How about sixty million? Well, we might vote for that." "How about seventy million?" Well, some of them are saying absolutely not, some are saying, "Eh, we probably would." When I get to eighty million, everybody I've asked that figure, I've said, "No, we won't vote for that." So I know the survey said eighty-five million, but the survey did not include, the people that are going to vote did not respond to the survey. And I know we're hanging a lot of money or a lot of our hats on the survey, which we have to because that's the information.
We should. And I understand where you're coming from, but just to clarify, people who have no connection to the district did answer the survey.
I know.
Half of them that responded had no connection to, and the company that we hired weighted it three quarters to those people to assimilate that, or simulate that seventy-five percent.
My point is, half of the ones that responded that have no connection to the school district said yes, but only about seven hundred of the responses were from people with no connection to the district, and you got another ninety-three hundred out there that voted in the last election. I'm just, I'm just afraid, I'm really afraid of the figures. And so, you can go on, you can, you can make your decision. Uh, now you know where I'm going to stand on this because I, I can't come down no. I don't want to be the reason this fails, and I cannot vote yes because of the dollars.
Okay. And, and this is, it comes down to a, a community investment?
Yes.
Because there's benefit to people, even if they have no connection to the district, there's a benefit. As you know, as a Realtor, there's a benefit to the-
I, I understand that.
To the people. And so at this point, I think Brian's been waiting, I, I want to ask if, because we're going to have probably different figures maybe thrown out, but if hypothetically there was a seventy-four point two million for bonding for the high school and seven point nine at the middle school and the eight point two at, for the athletic or the extracurricular, we'll call it, just combined, what impact does that have when it comes to mill rate? Mill rate increase?
Yeah, right. So just to remind everyone from the previous meetings that when I'm going to speak, I'm speaking about the increase over the current commitment for referendum-approved debt. So, um, the, knowing that there was going to be a lot of moving parts here tonight, I, I tested the max number of, I, I used the ninety-three million as the example, and using the assumptions that we had been talking about, uh, in previous meetings, the increase at, up, all the way up to that ninety-three million is, is still that one cent increase over current per thousand dollars of property value per million dollars. So saying that differently, if that question one comes in at seventy-four million-ish, your, your approximate increase in the mill rate is seventy-four cents related to that first question. If you then use eight, or seven point nine million for question two, you're, you're roughly eight cents, let's call it, as opposed to seven point nine cents, but in that ballpark of eight cents. And then for, um, question three, if you're at eight million two, you're going to be a little over eight cents, so eight point two cents. So, and, and again, want to be clear so that the message does not get misconstrued, we're currently estimating at what we believe to be higher than current market, or they are higher than current market, conservative interest rates. Um, we are using a two percent growth, uh, in the property values when your last few years has been six percent, um, and then one percent thereafter. Um, so we're using what we believe to be conservative planning estimates when we're modeling out this debt repayment over time. Um, and we are utilizing, as was clearly stated in that, um, survey and the, and the chart that we discussed at various committee meetings, we are structuring this new debt strategically around the planned future drops in your current debt so as to not burden the current taxpayers with the new debt relative to the future taxpayers that will be benefiting from these investments. So are, are there any questions on the clarity of that? That, that it's, you know, a per million, one cent per thousand increase per million dollars of, of, no matter the combination?
That's assuming then that the total that gets approved is somewhere in that eighty to ninety million range, correct?
Correct.
The lower it is, then it's even less than a penny, correct?
Yeah, that's, that's a good point, uh, Jamie, that, that it could be, I could, I would have more options for how I'm structuring it if, if we go to, to, to lower numbers. You know, no, you know, we had tested all the way down into the, to the mid to low forties is where that break even of, um, fitting in the new debt around the old debt without an increase over. So it's, it's, there's a, there's a range of options within there, but within this range that you're discussing tonight, uh, it's in that, you know, give or take one cent per thousand dollars of property value.
And for it, our average house was the two hundred and forty thousand, so we're talking a hundred and seventy-eight dollars on question one and roughly twenty dollars questions two and three. Hundred and seventy-eight dollars on question one and then twenty dollars on questions two and three roughly, if it's around eight million. Nineteen point two to be exact, but around twenty dollars annual increase.
Correct.
Over the twenty-two years.
Mr. President?
Yes.
And question one is just the high school? Or high school and middle school?
Right. Just high school. Just high school would be at that seventy-four point two, and I just did the math times two hundred and forty thousand.
May I make a comment?
Yes.
Um, given the survey results, which I can only base that on respondents, whether or not they're voters or not, um, we didn't separate out the middle school and high school question, so I don't, I can't predict what, um, a referendum, uh, answer to the question would be since we did, we weren't considering that, and now we are. Um, I guess I would be, be interested in what the administration deems, uh, is a bigger priority, whether that's the middle school or high school, and where those needs are, uh, what you would deem to be of higher importance.
We believe the needs are great at both ends, otherwise we wouldn't come to you with, with the questions. We would, you know, ultimately love to see the, uh, middle school and high school on, on the same question, but, um, also have a level of confidence that if people are willing to support the high school, they'd also be willing to support the, the middle school on the second question. So, um, we feel comfortable that we can message our case of why we're, why we're asking what we're asking, whether you do two questions or you do three questions. So we feel that there are needs on both ends. Obviously, there's different needs in, in both buildings. So that's about as skirt around the question as, as I can get.
As long as we can look at every scenario.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to pick one son over the other if that's what you're asking me to do, but I, I think there are needs in both buildings. The needs at the high school obviously are larger, and that's reflected in the dollar amount than the needs at the middle school. Um, but, you know, as you saw in the survey, people are rating the needs both at the middle school and the high school almost evenly as far as space and things along those lines.
So I guess I would appeal to the board to say, "I don't, I don't know why we would separate those questions." And then in the third question, potentially lump the auditorium and stadium together when the, the survey showed clear differences, uh, in the community's assessment of those priorities.
Mr. President?
Lynn.
So Carrie, what would you recommend then for a question?
Well, exactly what I stated before, Lynn. The high school and middle school is one, the auditorium is a second, and the multipurpose stadium is a third.
So my fear of that is you do get the arts competing with the athletics, and you have people saying arts are more important, stadium's more important. I, I think that, um, combined, those two groups will have an opportunity to, uh, make their voice be heard. Well, potentially, yeah. Don't ask a question at all, just leave it off entirely?
I don't, I don't know why we asked two separate questions in the survey and then we're disregarding those results. Yeah, I would say-
Well, except Carrie, when you say disregarding the results, the results were that we would spend eleven million for athletic facilities. We're not doing that here. So we're all, we're altering the question by cutting the athletics back to just the stadium.
Which could be used for gym, as you said.
Right.
So would you be in support of a two question? Both schools and auditorium and sports?
Mr. President?
Yes, Rob.
If, if what I'm understanding from Sandy rings true and that there's sensitivity on a question-by-question basis where there's a better chance of potentially both the high school and middle school passing if they're separate questions, then I'm, then I'm in support of that, in support of that.
Bruce?
I don't think we're taking anything away from the public by asking three questions. We're not, we're not eliminating anything. We, yeah, we are eliminating baseball fields and soccer fields or, you know, softball fields or whatever else, tennis courts. Um, you're addressing one main stadium question. Um, I think to Jamie's point, if, let's say, the multipurpose stadium and auditorium didn't pass, uh, we would still seek feedback from the community and, uh, if it made sense to phase it in a later time and the community feedback through a survey was, "You really got to take care of the auditorium," we could do that and still phase it in appropriately. I think from what I've heard, uh, there are people that do have some concerns around the total cost between the high school and the middle school. Um, there are people that do feel the need, that we need to get something done. And if you combine the high school and the middle school, I think you've got a lot of people starting to want to take the dollar figure down or talking about it anyway, and it creates noise. Uh, and that noise, uh, can become a rumble. Uh, I think when you leave them intact and do them the way that, um, they address our kids' education and the needs in the district for now and to the future, it gives the public the opportunity to vote on those without taking anything away from them, the public. Uh, and it still, uh, addresses the high school, it addresses the middle school, and uh, it brings the alternatives and options just like we've done throughout this entire , uh, community engagement process. So for, for me, um, I am, you know, it's, it's odd, uh, but I am less likely, uh, considering our last meeting. I really wanted to stay with two questions, uh, but talking through it, uh, listening to some other community members, I don't think it's, uh, an unfair compromise in which is something we've been working on a, a lot to ask three questions. That's my position.
And I want to, I mean, I agree with your comments you just made, Bruce. I don't think we're taking anything away from the public. If anything, we're giving the public more choice, and I think that, that's what they've been asking for all along. They were upset previously when we, you know, gave them only one choice in the last referendum. Um, I think they want choice, plus to Rob's point, why would we, if we have an opportunity to do something that's going to increase the chances of at least one of the questions passing, why would we not do that? Conversely, if you're going to take an action that's going to reduce the likelihood it's going to pass, why would you do that? We want to get this passed, and I think to do it in chunks makes sense. There are different buildings, there are different needs, different projects, and, um, based on the survey, they had different priorities. Not a huge difference, but both pretty high, and I'm confident that they can both pass, but they have a better chance of passing as separate questions rather than combining them.
Can I make, uh, one more comment, Mr. President?
Yes.
Um, in our facilities and grounds meeting, and Sandy and Rob, correct me if I'm misspeaking here, I'm only trying to recall from our conversation. The point that Sandy brought up about the fifty million, uh, and the group that you were speaking with, uh, they said, "Yeah, they would, you know, support that." Sixty million, "Yeah, they would support that." Uh, seventy million, you said, "Yeah, a couple people would support it." Um, there were some that wouldn't support that. Uh, did ask how many people were a part of that group. It was, uh, your response was six. The four would say yes, two said absolutely not, and then when you got to eighty million, all of them were no, absolutely not. Um, I do feel, uh, if we're at seventy million or seventy-five million, uh, I would sure hope that the public can get behind seventy-five million or seventy-four too, uh, when they really want it at seventy. Uh, and I will reiterate, um, yes, to Rob's point, we don't know what we don't know in this building, but we do have some contingencies built in. Uh, you have gone through this process before, it's not your first rodeo, you've gone through renovations in the past. Uh, we just did a renovation for, uh, a planned one point two million or one point one million, and we came in around eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars or so, give or take a thirty-
Nine.
Nine, okay, so twenty. Um, so, great work, right? Uh, again, great use of our funds, good job for our taxpayers. Uh, boy, would I hate to, to try and tear this thing down to seventy million and, uh, either A, have to go back and ask for more funds later, or B, ask for seventy-four two, bond appropriately, and hope that we can come in at a lower dollar figure, you know? And that's really the ideal scenario, uh, assuming we do our job appropriately in bringing the right architects in, bringing, you know, the right, uh, contractors in to, to do the work. Uh, I think this district is a pretty good history of having folks come in at, at, uh, less than what was, uh, originally asked for within the public. So I, 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 um, I think it does get the number to a place where, um, we may, as a community, get more people behind, uh, that figure, and I would sure love to see, uh, a position where you've got the community fighting for more of the options, uh, and at minimum, fighting for the high school. And if you can get a surge of folks fighting for that, and then you get other people around the other two questions, um, I think it does something that we set out to do, which was try and bring our community closer together. And those options allow us to work more cohesively as a community.
Mr. President?
Yes, Sandy.
I just would comment on, uh, what Bruce said, that, you know, the one incident that I had talked to people that I mentioned at the facilities meeting, I was talking to six people, but actually I was wrong, there were seven there and I said six. Um, this is not a scientific, I haven't done any scientific surveys about this. Um, those are not the only people that have talked with me or called me or emailed me or stopped me in stores. There's been many. I just mentioned at the facilities meeting, the six or seven that I had had at a breakfast that week before the facilities meeting. So I just want you to understand, this, I haven't done any scientific anything. This is just what I'm hearing out there. I'm just concerned. And the board, you'll have to do what you want to do and then let the public decide. And the board, you'll have to do what you want to do and then let the public decide, but I have concerns about the dollars.
Mr. President?
Yes, Sue.
Have I exceeded my, my, Mr. President?
No.
Asking a comment, okay. I, you know, when I came on board, whenever it was May or something, I felt, I was so excited about joining this effort for community engagement, we were all locked in arms, walking a breath through this whole thing. My favorite word was transparency. And I feel that, I don't want to think that we violated the trust of that process by getting to this point now and talking more about numbers than the project, which is about meeting the educational needs of our, of our students. And every time we've had a public comment, the five-hour marathon at Willow and the four-hour one here recently, we, we only had one or two descending voices basically saying what you're saying. Unless it's, we can get, you know, a Cadillac quality for, you know, half the money, I won't vote for it. And I, I don't want us to move into appeasement here. And I, I also see a strong link between high school and middle school, and there are people that I know that have children, that I'm close to, that have kids in middle school that I go into high school. And it seems to me that they're, they're joined at the hip in terms of the educational effort. So I don't know where Carrie is at this moment in her thinking, but I, I would, I would be willing to consider, after this extensive exchange of views, to go to a two-question thing, two-question referendum, and have high school, middle school, and then, you know, auditorium, athletics, and you all know how much I am for the auditorium. So I've been transparent on that. So that's where I'm at now.
Okay, I'm going to call a recess, and we'll be back in five minutes. So we've had roughly three hours of discussion on this, and I take it that, pardon? Oh, all right. We were talking about dollar figures and, but also number of questions, and I guess we've heard from various board members on number of questions. I guess I haven't heard with regard to the, the logic of, you know, playing out the scenarios. We've already said that we would be committed to doing the project at the high school. I mean, everyone sees that as the first priority, I would think. If there's other people that see it differently, then they'll have that opportunity if they're separate questions. They can always vote for the middle school and not vote for the high school. But by getting the high school, if that gets approved because it's at the seventy-four million plus, which is what we said it would be in the survey, and it would be even better supported according to the percentages based on the survey. And if the middle school didn't, I guess at the very least, we'd be able to do our exit interview, find out what would be an acceptable amount, and still tackle that project. It's a project that can get done in basically a year and a half, right? I mean, we, this one would have been, this one would be able to be done by the fall of 2017, when it passes, if it passes in April.
The middle school?
Yes, the middle school. But what I would fear is to keep them together, just because you want both to pass, just because we want separate questions doesn't mean we don't want both to pass. But to put that at risk and have the whole thing and then start all over. We know what construction costs are doing. We don't know what interest rates are doing for sure, but they're not likely to go down from here. We risk a lot by having nothing get passed. And so we've got a bit of an impasse with some board members who want to see us do at least something and get the high school going, which is the ninety percent of the total cost of this thing, is at the high school. So we're getting to the point we can have more discussion about it, or we can have a motion, yes? Because I think we do need to have a motion that says which way we're going with the number of questions, and then take separate motions with each question, because we have the specific wording that we have to. And then we have at the end a fourth resolution, potentially, or a last one that talks about the election, yes?
And I'm, I'm happy to make a motion, but I want to make a plea, if you will, of the board in consideration. I see the eight-hundred-thousand dollars, that buy-down of the middle school project, dropping in under eight million dollars as psychologically beneficial to our voters. I see that having a better chance of passing with that buy-down. I don't see spending the two-point-seven, getting it from the seventy-six-nine down to seventy-four as potentially beneficial, when we could use those dollars or at least hold them in hand for potential contingency if we don't need it, or for other important things. So I'd love a, a quick comment from bearing board members on what you, what they think of keeping the two-point-seven in, in hand versus spinning it down.
Mr. President?
Yes, Lynn.
I see the similar value that you see in bringing the middle school project down under eight to bringing the high school project down under seventy-five. So I, I would be in favor of allocating those funds. I feel like we've made a commitment all along to the taxpayer, that that's exactly what we would be using those for. I know we have the ability to reallocate those facilities to anything that would be for secondary space, but I feel like we've talked about it in conjunction with these projects all along. And when we have budgeted for those and set those aside, I feel like we made that commitment. So for me, because I've been around since we started talking about those, I feel like we would be going against what we say. So, and from the same value that you see in bringing the middle school project under eight, I see the same value for under seventy-five for the high school.
Mr. President, I'm...
Yes, Sue.
I agree with Lynn and Rob.
Okay.
Wait.
Mr. President?
Well, yes, go ahead, Carrie.
I would say before we address the fund balance, we should decide if we have one question or two for the high school and middle school. And does the middle school figure represent a twelve classroom addition or ten? Without flipping back to that.
The initial discussion, I base this on Jamie's initial comment, this was the least expensive solution, which was the ten-classroom addition.
And using the math of twenty-five students per classroom increases capacity, classroom capacity of two-hundred-and-fifty at the middle school.
To clarify, if, if we did address the fund balance now, assuming only one of the questions passed, would then the, the entire fund balance go towards that figure, whether it's the high school or the middle school? I mean, I think that's what we're, we need to focus on.
Here's the thing, we're putting, as I understand with the resolutions, we're putting an amount that we can bond up to. Again, we don't have to bond for the whole thing. We don't have to use any of the capital fund at the end, when this is finally designed and bid out. We don't have to use any of the capital fund. But it's just coming to a number, and we've got the money in the fund, what do we want to go to the bank, so to speak, to get the approval? The bank is our taxpayers, and we're asking them for approval to borrow up to a certain amount.
That's correct, that's correct. When you see the resolu, they're stated in not to exceed amounts. So if you're going at seventy, the seventy-four million for the high school, it'd be not to exceed that amount. So you can go under that if circumstances play out, you just couldn't go above it.
And, and take the next step, we take, and both questions pass, both the middle school and the high school pass. And then we go to design it, and we bid it, and we find out that to get the ten classrooms or twelve classrooms, we need to spend a little bit, we don't have to spend as much, but we end up, we need to spend more at the high school. We can reallocate that capital fund any way we want in order to make the project work. So where we do have cost overruns, like, you know, in the contingencies, we can spend where we need to spend in order to do this right. I mean, I'm all about doing this right. It's not just doing it for as cheap as we can. I mean, we've done that in this district. It brings up, we have Dish at Home, we don't have cable. So we don't get that great Hudson cable station. And they were running a history of Hudson on it. And in there, they did the history of public education in Hudson. And they talked about, I think it was in the eighteen-eighties, they built a school, and they built it so cheap that within two years, it was starting to fall apart. And we've got kind of a history of that, of not building either A, big enough, because we get overcrowded too soon, or B, designing it so that it's best for the kids. You know, we build a high school because it was built during the energy crisis, so we don't put any windows in the thing. I mean, I think that we want to do this right. But I'm confident that Matt's numbers have a lot of validity, and then we've gone to the community, they've told us where they want to spend. These numbers that we're proposing are right in the wheelhouse of those ranges. And we're under, slightly under, the tax tolerance that the community wants for at least the academic portion of this. And it may turn out that they'll go ahead, if they see the value in it, of passing the extra credit. And if they don't pass it the first time, we have the option of going back and getting another two-and-a-half million for the auditorium. That scenario has played out in other districts. Sutton Prairie is the perfect example. Ninety-three million spent for the high school, had a swimming pool for three million, the ninety-three-million-dollar high school passed, the three-million-dollar swimming pool did not. A year later, it came back, it cost four million, but it passed. Correct? Essentially, I don't have the, all right. So this is not the end-all, be-all here, but what we're trying to do is respect the taxpayer, respect our community engagement process, and do the right thing for students, and give the public choices. And I see us being able to do that with three questions that are in this range.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Apologize. I understand the logic of everything that's being said. One point that you said, you want to, you want to go with where the community has agreed to spend. They've, they've said what they want to spend. They didn't say where they want to spend it, because we didn't ask them where they want to spend it, other than auditorium and sports. We didn't ask middle school and high school. I can see the logic of separating those questions, but back to the trust and transparency, we are changing potentially a referendum, referendum structure from what we proposed.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I agree, I agree with Carrie. And I also watched the program on the history of Hudson, and I think Sandy's been talking to some of the ancestors, because some people, some people with lots of money wanted to build a hospital for Hudson, and the people voted it down, and it wasn't going to cost them any taxpayer money, so.
All right, Nick, you have a point?
Well, it makes you think I know any ancestors from way back, Matt.
Just to bring us back to when we did the survey process, understand that the survey was never designed to be the three referendum questions that we were going to ask in the end. The survey was designed to ask questions of the public. We were very upfront in the process, that from the data and the feedback we got in the survey, we may change the question structure, we may change what goes in the survey, or what goes in the referendum. But the, the survey wasn't going to be necessarily the end-all, be-all. How the questions were asked in the survey have to be identical to how a referendum would play out. And so I, I would just caution you a little bit in the standpoint of whether it be exactly seventy-nine million, or exactly these together or those together. I think part of the reasons why, the logically from the administrative end, of why we separated out the ball fields and the fine arts is because in the last referendum, they were separated out, whereas the ball fields are included in the main question, and the auditorium was not, it was a separate question. And so we wanted to see the feedback on those each standing alone, so that you guys would know, would you want to include them into a main question, or, you know, provide them a separate, separate option? So I would just caution from a standpoint of, the, the survey was never designed to say, these are our three ref, or these are potential rest, you know, referendum questions as written, and we can't deviate from them. I mean, that would be my, that would be my only caution as I listen to him. I mean, the, the content of the survey is very good, and we got a lot of good information, but I think right from the get-go, it was not going to be the end-all, be-all. It has to be this exact wording at this exact dollar amount.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
I propose we offer three questions to our community. Question number one, for the high school scope, a dollar amount totaling seventy-four million, two-hundred, or three-hundred thousand dollars. Question number two would be for the middle school scope, for seven-point-nine million dollars. The third question for the combined auditorium and multipurpose athletic facility totaling two-point-four-six million dollars.
You said auditorium and stadium?
I'm just looking at the budget. Oh, my apologies, is it eight-point-one, eight-point-two million dollars?
All right. I want to be able to do the stadium and the auditorium for two-point-four million as well, but...
I was going to applaud Matt for his work.
All right. We have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
All right. There's been a motion and a second. Well, this is just, this is just a motion that we're going to proceed with three questions, and we've got a dollar amount targeted, but we're going to still have to pass the, the resolutions separately for each question.
Mr. President, can I just ask that a non-architect verify the math here as well? I, I feel more comfortable that everybody has, is coming to the same totals that I came to in my quick spreadsheet, just to make sure that we don't have a goofy error in here.
We have to round within...
Five thousand dollars. This is the, the high school scope, the ten-classroom addition at the middle school, the fund balance as Jamie allocated, the two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-three-hundred is a credit for the tennis courts, tennis court lights. Is anybody else getting these same numbers, Tim or you?
Yeah, I'm just doing them in my head, rounding to the nearest thousand, yeah, I get the same numbers.
And when we get, we get to the motions for the resolutions themselves, the wording will be up bond, asking for bonding up to amounts for those. So right now, this motion just states approximate amounts of what those motions would be for. So this is just a motion to be asking for three questions. It's not putting anything on the ballot yet.
But it is for those amounts, I mean, it would be added up, those amounts.
It's, right, he's proposing, he's putting amounts in his motion. He didn't have to, based on what bond council told us, but he's, he's done that in his motion.
And I would call for a roll call vote, please.
Okay. All right, unless there's any other discussion, we'll start with Sue.
Katana's eye.
Rob's an eye.
Johnson's eye.
Hanson's an eye.
What a crack.
Gerke Epstein.
Brown eye.
All right, the motion passes. So now I would refer you to your packet of potential resolutions. We had up to nine, or six, I guess it was reduced down to, all right? All right, so based on the motion, we'll be looking at resolution one, two, and six.
And six.
One being the high school by itself, two being the middle school by itself, six being the combination of the athletic and the auditorium. And now for this motion, bond council, do we need every word to be read?
No, you can simply move, if you're going to do number one first, is move and read the title, move approval of initial resolution authorizing issuance of seventy-four million three-hundred thousand.
Okay. We don't have to do the first be it resolved?
No.
Okay. Then, all right. Is there a motion?
Real quick, so there's no descriptor on what that goes with? There's, there's no descriptor on that, that's associated with the high school project?
In the, in the first, I'm sorry, in the first resolved paragraph, it relates, the purpose language in there speaks to...
The high school.
Additions, renovation, upgrades to the high school.
High school and equipment acquisition related to said projects. So we insert the dollar amount... So, we insert the dollar amount both in the title and in the first paragraph?
That's correct.
All right.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm sorry, what you just clarified, so would, that would preclude us, should all three resolutions pass, from using any of those funds for any of the other two questions?
If I understand your question correctly, right. If they are presented at referendum in these amounts, then if the first question is passed, you can use bond proceeds of up to seventy-four-three for the high school, up to seven point nine for the middle school, and up to eight point two for the auditorium and stadium.
Okay, well then.
But you can't, you can't intermingle and combing, because you're, you have just those amounts for those projects, because you're approving three separate questions and resolutions.
All right. Well, that's a great question, because it leads to a question I have, and before we get to motion. In theory, if the seventy-four-three passes, question number two passes, and question three did not, but in the process of designing and bidding the high school, it was determined that we could renovate the auditorium, and do the upgrades of the auditorium, and do the addition at the high school, and the full renovation for an amount that we would not need to bond more than seventy-four-three, could we proceed with those renovations to the auditorium?
I, I think, given the fact that you have a separate question on the auditorium upgrades, and that would be defeated, I, no, I do not think you could use the proceeds for that.
Okay. Second question. We passed the first two, and the cost is exactly what was predicted it to be, but, strike that, but it was three point five million dollars less. We didn't have to apply any of our capital fund, which we've already set aside, the board has set aside, to be used for any capital project that we deem appropriate. And if, through the bidding process and efficiencies, we're able to do the middle school and the high school, and still keep three point five million in the capital fund, could we upgrade the auditorium using the capital fund that we already have for capital projects?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Question? Yes.
Is there any, was there any further thought to the ten classrooms versus twelve before we called this good?
Just so we understand, again, th, these are square footage holders, where you're not approving a ten classroom addition or a twelve classroom addition, you're purely approving a dollar amount. So, at that dollar amount, we might get eleven classrooms, or we might get nine, you know, so just, it's purely a, purely a dollar amount.
Yep. No, got it. But that additional amounts, another five-hundred-twenty-five thousand, so before we motioned. Okay. I'd like to make a motion, Mr. President.
All right.
I motion to create resolution number one for the high school project, the initial resolution authorizing issuance of general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed seventy-four million, three-hundred thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
And it's clear that this is applying to number one, proposed resolution that includes renovations, additions, upgrades to the high school and equipment acquisition related to said project. Any question about that? Any further debate about that?
Roll call vote, please.
Okay. Rob, it's your motion, so I'll let you go first.
Brown, aye.
Gerke, Epstein. Whitaker, aye.
Hanson, aye.
Johnson, aye.
Robson, aye.
Katas, aye.
All right, moving along. Proposed resolution two deals specifically and only with middle school addition, renovation, and upgrade, and equipment acquisition related to said project. Do I have a motion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion for resolution number two, the middle school project, the initial resolution authorizing issuance of general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed seven million, nine-hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Roll call vote, please.
All right. We'll start with Sue.
Katas, aye.
Robson, aye.
Johnson, aye.
Hanson, aye.
Whitaker, aye.
Gerke, Epstein.
Brown, aye.
Okay, then moving along, the, based on Rob's earlier motion, we are looking at resolution number six, the athletic facilities and auditorium projects. And this is constructing and equipping both.
I'd like to make a motion.
All right.
Resolution number six, athletic facilities and auditorium projects, initial resolution authorizing issuance of general obligation bonds in an, in an amount not to exceed eight million, two-hundred thousand.
Second. Again, any further questions, comments? We had, this is the one that had the most potential combinations, depending on which athletic facilities, or whether we use just auditorium and so forth, so.
Roll call vote.
All right. Bruce is calling for a roll call vote. Bruce, you can start then, if you're calling for the roll call vote.
Hanson, aye.
Whitaker, aye.
Gerke, Epstein.
Brown, aye.
Katas, aye.
Robson, aye.
Johnson, aye. The motions for those resolutions pass, and now, we need a final resolution, and my understanding is that the title and the first whereas has to be read in full.
The, the, the fourth resolution, again, you just need to read the title of the resolution. We do need, now that we know what the board has passed here, the, the fourth resolution is what we call the referendum resolution. It, it really is a, an administrative type of resolution. It says, the board has now adopted three initial resolutions aggregating, and the aggregate amount is ninety million, four-hundred thousand.
Ninety-nine?
Ninety million, four-hundred thousand. Oh, it's up there on the screen. And the referendum resolution sets forth, as I said, administrative things, the polling places will be the regular polling places, these are the election notices that we'll publish, municipal clerks will act as, for distributing ballots, things of that nature. So, it's really an administrative resolution that follows once you've adopted these initial resolutions. If there are any other questions, I'd be glad to answer that.
Just, just for clarification, which, which parts, again, need to be read? Is it just the title?
Just the title. Just the title.
Okay. Okay. But then, we should also insert in the first whereas, it's the number three, right? Has duly adopted three initial resolutions.
Yes, the number three, and then the, the dollar amount of ninety million, four-hundred thousand.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to, this is the resolution that, I guess, authorizes Carrie and I to sign, so.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for a resolution providing for referendum election on the questions of the approval of initial resolutions authorizing issuance of general obligation bonds in an aggregate amount not to exceed ninety million, four-hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion by Lynn. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Second by Sue. Thank you, I didn't hear it, sorry. All right. All those in favor?
Yep. Roll call vote, please.
Okay. Roll call vote. I'll start this time. Johnson, aye.
Hanson, aye.
Whitaker, aye.
Gerke, Epstein.
Brown, aye.
Katas, aye.
Robson, aye.
Okay. Moving on the agenda, then, we have a proposed resolution, or potential resolution on proposed Assembly Bill 481, Senate Bill 355. This is one that we've discussed at previous meetings, I think it was in November or December, maybe it was November, that Bruce and I had a conversation with Dean Knudsen, and it was sounding like that bill was not going to get much legs, but it has apparently either been amended, or it's been revised in some way, and it's now going to the public hearing stage, and there's actually going to be a public hearing on Thursday. So, added to your packet yesterday was the potential resolution, this is a proposed resolution from the Association of School Boards, Wisconsin Association of School Boards, basically opposing that, that bill. And the, the bill does several things, but primarily, the, the focus of it is to limit school boards as to when and how often they can put matters on the ballot. And I guess there's different ways of looking at this, but the primary one, I think we just demonstrated it over the last three and a half hours, is that these referendums are not just done willy-nilly, they're well thought out, they're well debated, and in our case, I think we had one of the finest community engagement processes that the state has ever seen. And to then limit the community in the event that any one of these questions that we've now put on the ballot for April, were to pass or, or not pass by five votes, to say that we would not be able to go back to the community for two years before we could get further, or even one year, that would be, I, I think, too, too restrictive. But Sandy, do you have?
Wasn't, I, I know the original proposal for the bill was two years, but I thought that that was changed to one. No? Still two?
Still two.
It's still two? Okay, thank you.
There was some talk about, that it will get amended to one, maybe, but there's no guarantee of that. And so, at this point, they're looking for feedback. Obviously, they've done a public hearing. And is there further discussion on this issue? Would you authorize us to sign a resolution that would be consistent with other districts in trying to preserve local autonomy and, you know, control over issues? I know that they did, some of the tinkering in it tried to talk about temporary borrowing. I think that was one of the things they tried to improve on, is that if you fell short of cash, you could borrow without going to the community, or that the community could authorize some short-term borrowing, or something like that. But again, it's putting lipstick on a pig with the little tinkering that they're doing, but that's just my opinion. I'd like to hear from other board members on this.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I, I, part of the bill was to restrict referendum questions to the, to the April and November elections each year also. I think, is that, that's still part of it?
Yeah, so, it would be two years and restrict them to general elections.
Right. They're restricted to general elections, which honestly, I don't have a problem with, because I've always thought referendums should not just be thrown at you on December twelfth, and, you know, June second and July third. But I really have a problem with the two years, because that, for us, it's not as big a deal, because we have levy power yet. We can fund what we need to do, but for a lot of districts, that two-year restriction is really going to hurt them, if they have to raise cash and cannot. So, I would be in favor of, you're asking if we would get behind a, a resolution opposing that bill?
Right.
Yeah, I, I would make the motion that we, the Hudson School District would get behind a resolution opposing that bill.
Okay. And, okay, second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Sandy, second by Lynn, and we've got some sample wording, I mean, unless you had major paragraphs that need to be struck from it, but I think the general gist is there.
I think it was fine.
And do we just, we'll go ahead and fix my signature, I don't know if Carrie, it's something the clerk has to sign too, but I'll, I'll, we've got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, the motion passes. All right. Now, next up is open enrollment seats available for twenty sixteen seventeen. We're close to being done, you want to just stay up here?
And this, Andrea will be able to speak to, but this should be somewhat brief from a standpoint of we've gone over this, both at a December work session and then committee meetings, so I'll let her speak to it.
And as Nick just indicated, there was consensus in both the committees that we presented this to, to move it forward with the recommendation.
Which committees were those?
Personnel and finance.
Learning program.
Learning program. Yes, learning program. And so, what you see in your packet materials, just really quickly, is our recommendation with respect to the high school, first of all, for sixteen seventeen, based on projected enrollment. For sixteen seventeen, we recommend that the high school, including special education program, be closed for open enrollment purposes, including cross-categorical self-contained programs, except for two seats in the cognitive disability self-contained program. Tony did go, our student services director, did go into more specific detail with respect to the two seats at the committee level. If you need more information, there's some supplementary information that, in subsequent pages, but that's our recommendation for the high school. For the middle school, we recommend closing the building, as well as all the special education programs. Then, if you look at elementary, based on discussions, as well as a roll-up of the numbers, we have a recommendation of open seats, kindergarten nineteen seats, first grade nineteen seats, second grade six seats, third nineteen, fourth nineteen, fifth nineteenth. And what we've done with this is a little different from prior years, in part as a result of concerns for secondary space capacity going forward. We've limited and basically built in a new cap of maximum seats allowable, based on those concerns. And so, that's why we have nineteen as kind of a consistent thread throughout, as a cap or the high point, or our capacity, which at second grade is six. Then, when it comes to special education, the programs would be closed, except for, for open enrollment purposes, except for fifteen seats in the cross-categorical neighborhood school program. And then, we spell out in here that to be eligible for those seats, you still have to have open availability at the, that particular student's grade level.
All right.
That's our recommendation.
So, these are the recommendations from the administration. It received consensus from both personnel and learning program development. Just a reminder that earlier in tonight's meeting, four, five hours ago, Nick gave in his report the fact that the dates for open enrollment applications, just because we set these seats as being available, doesn't mean that they'll be filled. They still have to go through an application process and so forth. So, I would entertain a motion with the recommendation, my computer is locked up, so I can't see it, so somebody else is going to have to say the number of seats, both special ed and regular.
Mr. President, I have one quick question.
Yes.
Andrea, I know you said it, but you said it like faster than I've ever heard you talk in your life.
I'm trying to.
I know. Why the six seats? I don't understand that part.
The six seats, that really goes to capacity. So, at second grade, our enrollment guidelines at that level is eighteen to twenty-two, and we're pretty full in terms of sections in that level.
Okay.
And so, to not, to go up to twenty-one, but not twenty-two, there's really only the six seats available.
I understand, oh, thank you.
Yeah. We started out with seventeen sections, and that class has grown since they were in kindergarten.
Correct.
So, that's why there's less room available.
I get it.
Question?
Yes.
We talked a little bit, a couple months ago, I believe, on family members who ultimately move up into junior high, senior high, and them not having spaces. Is that covered at all here? No? Okay.
No, this recommendation is only, I mean, it's still closed at this point.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to accept the open enrollment guideline, the seats that Andrea has just stated.
All right. And just to be clear, then, that would be none at the high school, except for two seats in the cognitive disability self-contained?
Yep.
No seats at middle school, including special ed, and then, the various numbers, nineteen, nineteen, six, nineteen, 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 four K through five, except for fifteen seats in the cross-categorical neighborhood school program at elementary level. Did I hit them all? All right.
Second.
Motion by Sandy, second, by Carrie. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. And our final agenda item, seven E, is new policy regarding service animals in schools. This was presented, I think, at learning and program development, received consensus. And Tony, you want to give us the thumbnail?
Sure. Yep. Thanks, Mr. President. Just real briefly, we're proposing a new policy related to the use of service animals in schools. This is a new policy that's required by federal law. What you have before you is What you have before you has been reviewed and approved by our legal counsel, Shayna Lewis, and it was approved unanimously at Learning and Program Development Committee.
All right. We had several questions on this one, but it was very interesting, because it defines what a service animal is, and provides all the parameters, but this is one of those policies that we need to have and we didn't have, and so we think that we've got all the contingencies, and we comply with federal law. Is there a motion to adopt this policy?
Move to adopt the policy number 5405 regarding service animals in schools.
Second.
Motion by Carrie, second by Sue. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries, and I'll now entertain a motion.
Move to it, Carrie.
All right.
Aye.
I'm going to give it to Lynn, second to Rob, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned.